Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, June 16th, 2021. I'm Kier Whitson, and I'm the Board of Supervisors representative to the Planning Commission, and I'll be chairing tonight's meeting, and I really appreciate everyone coming out. It's always encouraging to see how much interest the general public has in the matters before the Planning Commission. I know that we all appreciate it, and we all appreciate your input. Right now, we have six of the seven members of the Planning Commission here, with the exception of Mr. Light, and I expect he might show up shortly, but we do have a forum, and so we'll proceed, and I'll call the meeting to order. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, God and government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right off the bat, we are, I would like to make a couple of changes to the agenda. First of all, under item D, Public Hearing. Public Hearing Number Three, Special Exception Permit 21-05-02 Dowling Real Estate Blue Rock in Conference Center Tax Map 28-48. The applicant has withdrawn the special exception permit application, so we will go ahead and strike that from the agenda. And then, second, on the Vedits and Company Brewing LLC Special Exception Permit 20-12-01, this is a special exception permit for a brewery in a highway commercial zone. I would like to move that up in the order of the public hearings and put it first. As you can see, we have an American Sign Language interpreter, and we're going to be on a tight clock because of that. The interpretation results in a lot of fatigue for the interpreter, so we're going to try to limit that discussion an hour, and to accommodate, the interpreter will go first. So with those two changes, I would entertain a motion to amend the agendas I've just described.
So moved.
Mr. Kohler, second?
I'll say.
Mr. Sharp, any further discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes of the... The agenda actually says the April 21st minutes, that's my mistake for not catching that, they are the May 19th, 2021 minutes. Ms. Ishi has provided to me some typographic edits and a few changes in the phrasing. I did review them against the meeting recording itself, and I assure you that none of them are substantive, and all of them are accurate. If you take my word for it, I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the May 19th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting with the edits presented by Ms. Ishi.
So moved.
Is that Mr. Light?
Yes.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Mr. Kohler, second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you very much. And then, Ms. Summers, could I, could I give these to you and make sure to give them to Ms. Lee?
Thank you.
And Mr. Curry, his name is Ms. Dalton, one place. It's got an E in it. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the public hearing segment of our meeting. As mentioned at the outset, we will first commence a public hearing related to special exception permit 20-12-01 Vedits and Company Brewing LLC Tax Map 38A-1-6B for a brewery. Vedits and Company Brewing LLC has applied for a special exception permit for a brewery as provided for in 17036F and 17067E. The property is located at 11961 Lee Highway, Sperryville, identified by Tax Map Number 38A-1-6B, and is zoned highway commercial. The property is owned by Three Bearers LLC, and Vedits and Company will be leasing the property. The applicants plan to restore the 1909 building, which contains approximately 1,600 square feet. The brewery will provide 600 square feet of public space for the tasting room, two public restrooms, and a rear outdoor beer garden. The brewery will operate a three-and-a-half barrel system, which can produce up to 500 barrels per year. It is expected that they will only reach this capacity as the brewery grows over time. The manufacturing of beer will be 24/7. The hours of the tap house operations and retail sales area, including take-home beer, will be Friday from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., 12 months per year. And we saw it earlier this year, a site plan and a parking plan for the property. All of those documents, including the staff report and other materials provided both by the applicant and the property owner, have been posted to board docs. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing related to this special exception permit application. If I just see a show of hands as to how many people intend to comment during the public hearing. Okay, great. I'll now open the public hearing. If you could limit your comments to approximately five minutes. Whoever wants to go first, just step up to the microphone, and there's a handle on there. You can raise the height of it.
I'd like to add on the Hopkins ordinary, which is also a brewery. And I want to say I wholeheartedly support the application permit. I had one concern, which was the entrance and exit from Highway to Parking Area because it is 45 miles behind the scene. Could be able to take this place, but as long as the VDOT concerns are addressed, then I think it's a good idea to have a brewery.
Great.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak with regard to this application? Ms. Miller?
There's no act of district. I just want to say how glad I am to see that old building being restored. It would never be a house again, but it certainly is good to see buildings that are historic in this village to be restored. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and for the first time in quite a while, we do not, we do not have Zoom lined up here, so I am now closing the public hearing. Thank you. And with that, I will open the floor to my colleagues. This is in the Piedmont Voting District. Ms. Ishi, do you have any additional questions for the property owner? And is the applicant present tonight? Okay, right, oh, sorry, I didn't seem to see you there. Thank you. So the applicant and the property owner are both present.
Do they want to make an statement?
Is there staff, is there...
Go ahead.
I will attempt to keep my comments short.
Step microphone on.
Switch on top.
Oh.
I'm tired of...
Thank you.
Thanks. I will attempt to keep my comments short for the edification of the audience. You know, we started this in February. The Planning Commission requested a full site plan, which we've provided. We've also provided 24 parking spaces for guests and staff alike. If, if, I assume everybody on the Planning Commission has read Mrs. Summers' staff report. I'm not sure if I'm going out of order here, and...
That's fine.
Okay. You know, Rep. Hannah County Code leaves the amount of parking spaces required up to the zoning administrator. Last meeting, there was quite a bit of hand wringing about how many parking spaces are required, how many are not required, and I think we've certainly met that bar in Mrs. Summers' staff report. You know, she said with 35 proposed seats, we would require 18 parking spaces based on a much higher use of food and beverage service, which we are only focusing on beverage, Vedits and Company. And so, you know, we're at 24, which is above their requirement, and so I would hope that we could take all of this into account, given it's a commercial zoning district, it's a commercial area, we're adapting an old building for reuse. I think it's a good application. I hope you will approve the application for the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and, and I know we all really appreciate the effort that you went into pulling together the site plan and the parking plan and all of that, so really, it's much appreciated, and will be taken into full account, so thank you very much. Ms. Ishi, do you have any questions for the applicant or for Mr. Chapman?
I, I do. I can start out with some questions, and then if anybody else has others, they can, they can chime in. So, VDOT continues to, you know, we had raised before, first of all, let me just say this. I very much appreciate, again, the applicant has done good things in Sperryville, has, has, in my opinion, has, you know, brought to life some properties that wouldn't otherwise be brought to life, has kept things on scale, has kept things appropriate to the site, I think, and, and I think that shows a lot of community spirit, and I, I like this, this idea. I do think that, you know, having that property be used would be a great thing. The, the issues that I see, and I'd like to ask, you know, some more questions about it, is that this particular property is not immediately across from Main Street, but almost, and I am not somebody who wants to see, who, who, who is in favor of, you know, the Walmart kind of idea where you have to have, you know, enough parking to meet the one day of the year where you're going to have 6,000 people show up, and the rest of the year, it's empty. But I do think it's important to make sure that we're not having competition between that intersection, Thornton Gap Church Road, right adjacent to it, and the increasing amount of traffic going to the Shenandoah National Park. So I, I think at the last hearing, we, we asked you, and I'm cognizant of the zoning administrator's report, but we asked you, you know, if there's going to be any changes at all to your parking plan and so forth. So I assume there, you said at that time, you didn't think there would be, so is that still the case, that the plan you submitted last time is the plan you're working on?
Could you tell VDOT, ma'am?
Yes.
Sure. Yeah, please.
So, so VDOT is one of the authorities having jurisdiction in this plan, right? So is the Planning Commission. So is the Building Office. So is the zoning administrator. The Building Office requests information, and so does Mrs. Summers from zoning, requests approval from VDOT. VDOT, and we've gone back and forth now through three rounds of letters, and we're narrowing down the nitty-gritty details of, of the way this, these entrances and this parking lot will evolve. You know, in the latest letter from VDOT, they're referencing radius and, and entrance design, and so kind of we're, we're in shoulder, so we're narrowing in on details. So if you take the meta version of that, then we're, we're moving in the right direction with VDOT. VDOT has an Appendix F, Design Standards for Entrances, for Parking Lots, for Intersections, for Shoulders, and the engineers at VDOT are the ones that are commenting on this application. And they are fully aware of all of their standards in Appendix F. The fact that there is an entrance to Sperryville Main Street does, does not necessarily concern VDOT. Like I said, they're focusing on the details, the radiance, the rate, the radiant, radii of the, the entrance. Sightline distances, if you read VDOT's reply, none of the fact that there's an entrance, you know, 500 feet away, or sightline distances, this is not something that they've enumerated as a concern. And so I think we're dialing in, you know, as one of the authorities having jurisdiction, on their concerns. If VDOT does not sign off on this, then the permit office won't sign off on it, and Michelle won't sign, sorry, Ms. Summers won't sign off on this. And so, to meet that bar is, is appreciated that you're concerned, but is, is kind of down the road a little bit. I think that we're working towards that, and, and VDOT has, has a definite say in all of this, so we appease VDOT, and we kind of keep this ball moving, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Also, I'm reading 170-6, 170-67F correctly. You're allowed by right as a brewery, and I hope somebody will correct me, Michelle, if I'm wrong, Summers. A bus tour by right, one per month with two buses allowed, so buses would also be using this parking lot along with this, under a by right use for this. So did you have any thoughts or plans about how buses would pull in and out of the space, or?
So this falls into kind of what-if, and if we played what-if every morning, we wouldn't get out of bed, right? So, I'm sorry, that's curt. The, the, the entrance that we're designing and the parking lot we're designing will not accommodate buses. They just won't. I mean, we, we have to be very specific with VDOT about what vehicles are coming into the parking lot, and if you read VDOT's responses, they are asking, are you using this vehicle? Are you using that vehicle? Buses is, is not on the, is not on the list. Do we have a sign that says, you know, no tractor trailers, no buses, no, I mean, we could, but I don't think that's reasonable. Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll do one or two more, and then I'll turn it over to others who may have other questions. But you, these are just clarification questions. You said in your application that your hours were going to be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and then you said in your supplemental materials it was going to be Thursday through Sunday, the slightly different hours, which, just, just as a clarification, what are, what you're requesting for?
So this, this kind of falls into the brewery area. I, if, if I may, I'll turn it over to Greg. He will kind of discuss that.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Greg. It's nice to see everybody here this evening. So the hours that we had put down were of a guide. We were considering making changes seasonally, maybe longer hours during summer months, shorter hours during winter months, as a general rule, but we are certainly not going to be open any later than what is listed. Does that make sense?
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, one last question is, so I hope you'll bear with me on this, the 500 billion barrel gallons. So your Rep. Hannah County Water and Sewer Authority has said they, and given you authorization and approval for 14,700 gallons per year, so how does that compare against 500 billion?
It's 31, 31 gallons per barrel, is that correct?
It's what?
31 gallons per barrel. That's 500 barrels.
500 means 31. Each barrel is 31 gallons.
So, well, we've got, fortunately, we have an expert here right beside me, so in other words, the, the Water and Sewer Authority has, has given approval for the full amount that they're requesting. Okay, thank you. That's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, all good ones. Anyone else have questions for the applicant or the property owner?
I just have a couple of statements. Yeah. My things, I think that the Highway Department requirements can probably are, need to be met, so in some ways, I agree with Robert, over there, in that, as long as they are noted, that they need to be satisfied. And then, the thing with the barrels, so that's 31 gallons.
31 gallons per barrel.
Per barrel. And so a 500 barrel production, that's just the size that will produce that many barrels?
So that's, so that's actually a threshold set by ABC, if I'm correct.
So it's not the equipment, it's the license?
It's the license.
Okay, it's the license. Okay. And then, let's see, I had, oh, yeah, the other thing, which I've mentioned a couple of times, and I'm not sure I understand where our position is, the parking is on the adjoining parcel, and so I see some wording about, as long as you own that.
Right. Yeah. I think we discussed that, and Mr. Curry weighed in, just in terms of what state code allows, right?
Global code, your local code allows either parcel to be used to satisfy the parking, but it would be marked for the body to recommend, and the board likely to consider in their approval or approval, if they so choose, to bind both parcels.
Yeah. And, and I felt like binding the parcels would simply be adding the second parcel to the little line where it says what the parcel number is. It would be parcel one and two, instead of just parcel one. That's all. And then I do feel like, my personal opinion on the hours, I'm not sure that Thursday's going to hurt anything, because if you get into weekday hours, there are probably much less traffic on the road during the week than there would be on Saturday and Sunday. So I think if it works on Saturday or Sunday, I don't see the problem, but.
Any other comments or questions?
I got a question. So you're with the, talking about Thursday now, how many hours a week are we talking about?
What we're predicting is 16 to 20 hours of operation, and that's for distribution, for open for business for customers coming in.
20 hours.
Okay.
Good progress.
Other questions? Yeah. Okay, and I just, I just want to thank the applicant and land, or, oh, sorry.
Yeah. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I think Mr. Chapman referred to hand wringing about parking. There's one issue about this use, and that's the inadequacy of the parking, and I would point to the general standards of, you know, Section A. The proposed use shall be such that it does not adversely affect development of neighboring properties, and shall be in accordance with those. The, sorry, the B, actually, the proposed use shall be such that pedestrian and vehicular generated will be, will not be hazardous or conflict with the existing and anticipated traffic in the neighborhood and on the streets serving the site. If you look at the number of vehicles that show up at the Pendroid Brewery, it way far exceeds the number that would show up, likely show up here. There's single issue with this. I applaud the use. I'd love the idea of having another brewery. I love the idea of reusing that site, but I don't see that this is an appropriate site for a brewery. I think that the single issue is the likelihood that we will be dealing with a chronic traffic issue with people parking along that section of, of 211, and we haven't addressed that. And until we do, and unless we do, I, I certainly can't support this application. Thank you.
You know, it's, it's ironic, that Pendroid went down there on 522 outside of Sperryville, and was able to do their brewery there as an ag business. Never came before this body once, went in with, with no review by us, and here we have a property that's in the Village of Sperryville, it's own commercial, and, you know, they're going through a four- to five-month process, and basically, they did it as a by-right use, basically, in an ag area. So I think there's a discrepancy, you know, in, in our county now, where if you go to ag, it's more favorable than if you stay in commercial. It's just, it's an ironic situation that we have.
Yep.
And Pendroid, there's no comparison to this. Pendroid is like a recreational property. You pull in there, you've got three, four, five acres with picnic tables around, you can stroll, run your dog, your kids can play. It's completely two different entities. It's no comparison to, 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 to what we're talking about here, other than maybe they have a 500-barrel ABC license, and, and the proposed use here, too, is 500-barrel. So that's the only compatibility between the two. Well, I hope you're right.
Any, any other comments?
Yeah, I have some more. I, I think Mr. Henry makes a good point, that this is a different use than Pendroid, and I also point, would point out that this is a very different property than Pendroid. I, 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 as far as a special exception goes, a special exception is something that we make a recommendation on based on overall public health and welfare. It's an exception. It's, it's not a by-right use. And so Pendroid does have it by right, they get to do what they get to do, but when something comes before us, then we have to look at the overall picture, and VDOT has its place, and I would, you know, I would like to see VDOT's concerns addressed, because I feel that this, I, I, probably, since I've lived, in the 20-some years I've lived here, they've probably replaced that guard rail at the Main Street intersection, what, six or seven times? They're always down there doing work on it. There's, it's a tight intersection, people come flying down there on weekends, we've got motorcycle traffic that I can hear from my house that goes zooming down there, they're not watching what they're doing. I would say every weekend in the summertime, probably, you're just waiting for, on Saturday or Sunday afternoon, for the sound of, first the emergency vehicles, and then the medevac helicopter just down the road from there. And so I, I do think it's a, it's a different site than Pendroid, it's a different site than, than Hopkins, actually. And so I don't, I, this is, this is a hard one for me. I, I think the use is, is attractive, but I, I don't want to have to, you know, be hearing, you know, that there's been fatalities there at that spot, rather than, it's already bad enough when they're down in the park. So I, I, that is a concern for me, and I, I guess I'm not ready to support this until I see those VDOT concerns addressed and, and have a clear sense that, you know, this is not going to create parking backups on 211 with people with overflow parking on 211, which I, hey, I've done it before in my life. You're not, I, I don't think it's an evil person who's going to park on 211, it's just they're going to park there as a used space. And backing up buses, I just want to have assurance that this, this site is going to be able to handle the volume that it brings in. So I, you know, I, that would be, that, that really is the most outstanding concern, and, and maybe when you get things resolved with VDOT, it'll all clear it up, and, and that would be acceptable, but at the moment, I feel concerned about that still.
Okay. Thank you. I, I just want to say again how much I appreciate the effort that the applicant and the property owner have put in, into this. We've asked, I think, reasonable questions, and I think Mr. Henry hit the nail on the head earlier this year when he sought a site plan, and you came through with that pretty quickly, and we appreciate it. I think, for me, the obvious benchmark, and I've mentioned it before, is Hopkins Ordinary, which is just down the street, and to me, the scale of this proposed brewery is very much in line with that. The 500 barrels, unless someone from your side wants to correct me, the 500 barrels would be total contemplated production, and that the onsite consumption would be 100 barrels or less, which, if I understand correctly, is more in line with a Hopkins Ordinary type operation. And so I, over time, wrap my head around this to conclude that it's on, on a scale that I think fits that site. I share my colleagues' concerns about the location and traffic, and so I think that the way to, I mean, to borrow from your statement, the way to think about what-ifs is to at least place some reasonable conditions on the application, and, and frankly, let's see how it goes. And so with that, I, I would entertain a motion, if, if someone would like to put it forward, that we move this onto the Board of Supervisors, and the, and the path would be, in, in my opinion, I, I think we should move this onto the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval with certain conditions, if, if anyone would like to put those forward to mitigate, at least in the interim period, our traffic concerns, anything related parking or overflow onto, onto 211.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, to make a motion and take a jab at it, and due to the complexity of viewpoint of people, I wrote it out here, what my motion would be. In reference to the application SC 2021-01, I recommend approval is following of the applicant, subject to the annual review by the Rep. Hannah County Planning Commission each November, starting in November 2022, to consider occupancy capacity. Customer capacity is a maximum of 35 people. Site improvements to be completed, completed per racing engineer and site plan date at 5/14/2021. Additionally, is subject to VDOT and Building Department approval. And applicant to self-regulate the occupancy during the year. If they find that the proposed number of 35 customers is too large for the use, then they will reduce occupancy and report to the Rep. Hannah County Planning Commission at the next November review. The applicant to post a sign at the entrance stating, if parking lot is full, please visit at a later date, no street parking permitted. Approval includes two tax map parcels, 38A-1-6 and 38A1-6B, both parcels. The reason I put in here, that's my motion, the reason I put in here a review in November... The reason I put in here, that's my motion, the reason I put in here a review in November, is that I would anticipate probably October would be their busiest month. And if there's any problems, it would be fresh in everybody's mind the following month. And we can consider those factors at that time. And I, I think the owner of the property has demonstrated being a good citizen in Sperryville. And I think if they find that thirty-five people coming to the site might be different in terms of the vehicle and traffic that comes into the site, more people coming by themselves or whatever, they can adjust their occupancy down for the balance of the year, thirty-two, thirty, whatever it may be, report to us, and we review it for several years. And the only purpose of our review is to determine level of occupancy. It doesn't affect their permit to, to run business. And one final thing, addition to my recommendation, I'd like to recommend that the, there's been some talk about the number of hours. I'd like to state the number of hours at twenty hours a week at their discretion. They've mentioned Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. There's some Monday holidays and things like that. So if they want to do a Monday holiday, or Fourth of July comes on a Wednesday or something like that, allow them to do that. And so just give them twenty hours a week at their discretion, and the twenty hours are going to be. So that's my motion.
Thank you very much for that effort, Mr. Henry. Mr. Henry's put forward a motion as he just described. Is there a second?
I was wondering if you might add the VDOT complying with.
I did.
Oh, I didn't see it.
I, I stated it as an addition.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, subject to VDOT and building department approval.
And it's the twenty hours out of the. Okay, that could be adjusted later or not. Whenever viewed. You might just add hours and occupancy.
Hours and occupancy to be adjusted, considered.
I'd second it with that addition.
Okay, Mr. Henry made the motion and Mr. Sharp seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, thank you very much for the motion. I appreciate it. This is a difficult, a difficult question for some of us. But I, I probably will cannot support this motion for the reasons I've stated. However, I would say, since this mayor may not pass, that we should indicate that the closing hours would be as in the application of ten P M., that there be no outside music. And that, I would say that the applicant to self-regulate occupancy number during the year, I, I don't, I, I, I understand the sentiment behind that. I'm, I'm not sure that it, it benefits us. I think what, what the applicant considers adequate and what the, the community considers adequate are not necessarily going to be the same thing. So I would say that, you know, I mean, we can, we can include that because it doesn't hurt anything. But I don't think it, it, it gets us to dealing with the potential road conditions. So I would.
Are these, with these changes, are you offering to support Mr. Henry's motion or?
I am going to listen to folks and consider it if there's any further statements.
Okay, so what are you proposing to change? Again, just to be clear.
That there would be the hour, they would close at ten P M., there would be no outside music. And he's already added in the compliance with VDOT. And I don't, I don't know. Maybe there's others on this planning commission or the noted administrator can give instances of, I mean, we have, and I appreciate very much the applicant having produced a spreadsheet for us, very helpful spreadsheet about other properties in the vicinity. But I would note two things about the other properties. One, that they are long-term use existing properties. Even the schoolhouse, you know, has been there for a long time, even though that's in newer use. The schoolhouse has two entrances and a much larger, larger radius to turn around. The, things like Shaw's, for example, has been there a very long time. And adding additional uses is only going to increase pressures on that area. So to me, it's not necessarily convincing that, that they have it, so everybody else should get it too. I, I, I do worry about the increasing pressure on that. So I will, I have, I don't know whether I'll support this, but those would be my recommendations if.
Okay, Mr. Henry, would you be willing to include those in your, it's ten P M. closing, no outside music?
You know, there's only businesses in Sperryville, and I think they should have the right to close at the time that other businesses close in town too. Whether it's the golf course, Headmasters Pub, whether it's the corner store, Thonberg Grill, Pizza Place, whatever. Now it's called Rapid Pizza. So I think they, they should have the right to close while other businesses close in town.
Okay.
So I'm not inclined to add that.
How about outside music?
The applicant did not mention anything about music. I think that if they're going to run twenty hours a week, they're not going to be going till late at night. It can eat up their hours.
Okay.
With music. I think they're about beer. Not about the Beatles, so.
Good, very quick.
I don't have any problem with the music.
Okay, so we'll add no outside music and strike ten P M. closing. Okay, any other comments on Mr. Henry's motion?
I just have one question for intent.
Okay.
Do you intend every November for the rest of time?
You know, if, if, what.
Or just towards necessary.
Until we fine tune this. This is just like, you know, getting a tractor, getting a sprayer, whatever. You fine tune it, Alex, over a period of time to see what the traffic, the capacity meets their use. They could well develop a better wholesale business and use that capacity for wholesale and reduce their number of clothes, their retail altogether, to meet their wholesale needs. So I think we should give these people an opportunity over a couple of years to right-size.
Okay.
And it's, you know, and we're capping it at the capacity that, that the parking lot supposedly meets. And if that isn't correct, we can come down three, four, five, six people.
Okay, Ms. Summers, a question to you. From a practical perspective, people are often concerned that we don't have any way of enforcing the zoning ordinance, for example, in Rapid County. So just listening to this discussion off the top of your head, how would we make sure that we review this each November as Mr. Henry, I mean, you simply add a calendar invite, or a calendar reminder?
Yes.
For you to, to put it on the planning commission agenda, so we have a mechanism in place, so that'll happen definitively, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because I just, I don't want this just to be forgotten. Pretty.
Good question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yeah.
Me?
Yeah.
First of all, I greatly appreciate your thoughts on this, Mr. Henry. I think you've gone a very long way toward addressing some of these concerns. I guess the thing that I still struggle with is the matter we're talking about now is what our, what our mechanism is to deal with this in this review. I do think that the number of occupants is, is probably the best measure we have. But I'm still concerned with the fact that we can't control the, the parking along that area. And that's, if there's an issue that arises over this time, it's most likely to be the problem of despite a sign and despite anything else, cars parking along on that section of two eleven. So I, I guess, I guess we could do something like, you know, if we're able to continue to reduce the number such that eventually that, that problem would go away. My only concern with this is that it's not really a direct measure of what I conceive to be the biggest potential challenge of this use in this site. But I do applaud your, your effort. And I think on this issue of review, you know, we've had this come up before. If we just say review, the question is with what potential set of outcomes? If our only, if our only option is to adjust the hours and the, and the occupancy, maybe you could clarify that that is your intent. I understand that to be your intent.
That's my only intent.
Yeah.
They're going to have a business license. They're going to make the investment. They have a right to have a brewery. It's just a question of what will the site support.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that. Again, I, I think it's a good effort. I could just about support this if I believed that we have the, the real authority to deal with the problem.
I think, I think the fact that it's going to be a review in November.
Yeah.
I think October is, you know, at least Oktoberfest, you hear that all the time. It's a beer drinking month. And it's going to be problems. It's going to be in October, and it's going to be fresh on everybody's mind. It's not like having a review in, in June, which allows everybody to vacation in, you know, October is nine months before.
Okay, any, any further input?
Would VDOT put no parking signs on the side of two eleven?
I don't think we need to go there yet.
But I'm just saying that if that became a problem.
You could sign that place else.
Yeah, that's.
I think VDOT would come up with that solution. If there was a lot of parking there, they'd probably put them up themselves.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, I, I, I was going to say the same thing, maybe on no parking zone, but I don't like zones.
Let's just hope that this works out correctly. We're not given unlimited timeline. We look at it every year. They self-regulate this, and the patrons are good. They see the parking lot filled. They can come back another time, and everything will be fine.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Curry, do you, who's keeping track of the, the conditions that are in the motion? Is it Ms. Summers? Do you want to read through them, make sure that?
Same report as well.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, and it's, and the second was from Mr. Sharp. Any further discussion?
Yeah, can I, I, I'm sorry, I did not hear what, you've got a blank here on the cus, customer capacity.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Yep. And we added no outside music and struck the closing time, which I think is sensible. Any other comments?
Um, I.
Questions?
Yeah, I, so on, if, I, I do think that the review period potentially goes a long way to solving some of the concerns. But I, but I also, if we, if they put up all the money to start a business and get it all set up and renovate the building, you know, a year comes along and there are problems, we're not going to rescind this permit in all likelihood.
We're not going to rescind a permit, which is going to reduce the number of, of, of patrons.
And again.
We're not going to rescind any permits to operate.
And I, again, I just remind everyone that we have a, a nano brewery right down the street, same scale. As far as I'm aware, never any problems with parking or traffic or anything. And I know it's not the same type of location, but on that basis, I'm pretty comfortable that the scale is, is okay. And that with these conditions, it should work. Any further discussion?
I, I don't know that, I, I, I don't know much about the approval for the, for the Hopkins. It was my understanding that there were a number of limitations on.
We're not, we're not.
We're not, yeah, I'm just.
I understand that.
I think it's a useful benchmark, and I think it's a better one than talking about Pendroid, which is, Mr. Henry said is, is no longer configured in the same way.
So, so I, yeah, I, I would agree that they're not necessarily comparable uses, although they're all breweries.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a vote?
Yep. Any, any final comments, Mr. Shulon? Anything?
So this SE will not expire.
That's right.
It will just be.
It'll be reviewed.
Applying.
Right. And this will, this.
Where we kind of hold a little bit of power.
Right.
So we're not going to allow that to happen. I mean, issuing special exception for eighteen months or whatever period passed in November twenty-two. That way we can address issues.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's clear there are.
Review just seems kind of weaker or, I don't know.
May I, may I comment on that?
Yep, go ahead.
I don't mean to be cheeky about this, but I suppose the review of the occupancy could include, if this just can't be worked out and we can't control the flow of traffic despite their best efforts and ours, what we are preserving here, I think, is the, is the option of saying that the occupancy for onsite consumption is zero. And that would essentially mean we're continuing to allow them to produce for offsite use. But we're saying essentially that we, there, we haven't been able to manage the challenge. So I, I think in that sense, it does give us some greater potential to control the traffic flow issue. Not that we would plan to do that, and I'm sure that's not the intent, but just sort of thinking through it, it does seem like that would be kind of our ultimate, our ultimate recourse. If, again, I don't think it's their intent or their production level or their business plan that is, that has the potential to lead to the problem that concerns me. It's the fact that this is a very visible site with a sign that's going to say brewery. And there are going to be people, regardless of how much is inside, who are looking. And that, to me, is, is independent of this, so we can control it.
Mr. Light, you know, what paralleled this is that we've got a coffee roaster up the street. And I was so excited when I saw that. I said, wow, get a fresh cup of coffee. You've got a Starbucks in Sperryville.
Yeah.
Never been flooded like Starbucks. I've never seen it overcrowded.
That's a good point.
Mr. Chair, I just, I think there may be some legal issues with the reviews. But it sounds to me like the body is concerned about people parking there. And a simple condition you can apply in your permit is no on-street parking.
Right, and it's in there.
And if I like that, and a customer car comes to the street, then you can go through the process to.
It's in, it's in there, and, and frankly.
That's not.
All the customers.
Who's that?
No, no, on-street parking.
Where?
No street parking, no street parking permitted. It's.
Must have a different property.
If you do that, I don't think.
Yeah, it's.
The review stuff.
Where is it?
And you're loaded.
Yeah, well, and.
Down the floor.
So that's not just the song.
No street parking, okay.
That's a condition, no street parking.
Yeah.
That's not just the song.
Right. And, and, and finally, and then we'll, we'll, we'll call the question. Obviously, these individuals put a lot of time, energy, and money into, into this project. And in doing that, they're going to take seriously their obligations. They, I think there's been a thoughtful discussion. It's been several months. They know our concerns, and clearly, they're going to want to, to do right by Planning Commission and the County Board of Supervisors so that they can operate the business that they've invested in. So I'm confident with these conditions and a review, a review plan, and everyone will have a close eye on it. And I'm certain that the applicants and property owner will have a close eye on themselves. So with that, I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, Mr.
Actually, could I add two things? Thank you. I could support this motion with, with two provisions. One, I, if they're willing to agree to no bus tours on this, that would, that would.
We'll just say no buses. Okay, next.
And the other would be if we did put a, a time limit on this, a reasonable time limit, three years, five years. Because I, I think the likelihood of us pulling their, their customer capacity down to zero is zero percent likelihood of that. So, yeah, I could support it with a time limit on it or a, a, a endpoint. So I would.
If we can, if we can do a, an agricultural and forestal district every five years for, for thirty years, I think we can pull this and review this every year and, and just work it out and, and not have.
Yeah, I think we've, I think we've already covered it with the one-year review, Miss Ishi. I'll add no buses. And the one-year review period, I think, is already sufficient to make sure that we're thinking about this regularly.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be a pain in the butt. What's the definition of a bus?
And can a bus drop?
Okay.
Bus tour.
Can a bus drop?
I mean, you're talking about a quicks bus or you're, or you're talking about something that you see handicapped children come in that hold eight people.
I mean, the thirty-five people would in some way constrain the size of the bus.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you could come in, I mean, you get tours out here of coming out of Northern Virginia, there's two or three buses.
Okay.
No question to me that those big buses.
I'm adding no buses. It's self, it's self-evident.
What?
Well, I, I, I think, I don't think that's being a pain in the neck. I think that's a good point. I'm talking specifically about the fact that, that the one seventy-sixty-seven F allows bus tours by right. So that if he's willing to waive that provision, that would be.
Mrs. Ishi, you're throwing a lot of stuff in here just to cloud up the motion, cloud up the approval process and the whole application.
I think no buses.
You lose on one issue, then you throw a whole bunch more stuff into it.
I'm going to call the question. All right, roll call vote, Mr. Shulon.
Aye.
Mr. Kohler.
Aye.
Ms. Ishi.
No.
Mr. Sharp.
Aye.
Mr. Light.
Aye.
And Mr. Henry?
Aye.
And I will vote aye also. Thank you very much. I appreciate your patience. And to the American Sign Language interpreter, we got out here twenty minutes before you got worn out, so that's good news. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. That's a hard job. Okay. All right, Ms. Summers, I'm going to let you go ahead and introduce the agricultural and forestal district matter before us. Did, first of all, did the, did the other body meet before this one? Okay, so you can fill us in on what they accomplished and just walk us through what we're reviewing, please. Thank you.
So in nineteen eighty-one, the Wookiee Mountain Agricultural and Forestal District was created. Over the years, it's been renewed. Over the years, it's been renewed, um, some of the conditions placed on in the parcels of property in these districts, um, have been included on board docs as a draft, um, ordinance as well. The Agricultural Advisory Committee met this evening, they reviewed the parcels, um, that had agreed to renew back into the district and they recommended approval as presented to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, so this is, um, scheduled for a public hearing this evening, um, there was a, um, there were a couple of documents on board docs for the public to review. At this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing on the renewal of the Mulkey, Mulkey Mountain Agricultural and Forestal District. Public hearing is open if anyone has anything to say. I'm not surprised. I will close the public hearing, thank you. Um, okay, um, so the action, the action that, um, we will need to take tonight is a recommendation, um, and considera- recommendation based on a consideration of the Agricultural and Forestal District Advisory Committee, and then we would make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for a renewal of this district. Anyone have any questions or does anyone want to put forward a motion to move this along?
Mr. Chairman, I'll put forward the motion to move it along.
Second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Henry, motion, Mr. Light, a second, any discussion? And would that be a motion to send to the Board of Supervisors for approval?
Yes, sir.
Or renewal?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, that was easier than the last one. Okay, great. Again, just a reminder, we did strike from the agenda the Dowling Real Estate Blue Rock Inn Conference Center Special Exception Permit Application, so that concludes our public hearings for this evening, but now, um, we will open, uh, the public comment period and this is a time for members of public to comment on anything they wish that is at least somewhat related to the Planning Commission. And, um, Mr. Anderson, go ahead, thank you. Public comment period is open.
I would jump over the table, but there you go.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, my name is Mark Anderson, I'm from the Piedmont District. I'm a recovering attorney, a recovering real estate agent and a retired U.S. Naval Officer. But what's relevant to this is my legal background in land use, which is about forty years old. If you did not have the opportunity to read Attorney Koenig's letter from Monday regarding the matter that was stricken from your public hearing agenda, it is still worth reading. If the people in the public didn't get a chance to read it, and I'm not even sure it got posted on Rap Docs, it is available on the Rap News, uh, website and I commend it to you. Now, it's written by a lawyer, four lawyers, I'd say. Mr. Koenig can disagree if he likes, but it is a thing of beauty to me. It, all the issues he raised substantively are moot for the moment because the application's been withdrawn, but there are general lessons in that letter that can be very useful for this commission and county leadership, I think. The first is, there's, if we don't have a detailed checklist for someone who wants to come in and amend a special exception or a special use permit that's been in place, there is a great checklist in, contained in that letter that could be extracted out. And staff, if you already have a checklist, I apologize, I don't know if you do or don't. But there's a lot of details in there that could be placed on a checklist, being in the Navy for the number of years I was, we always use checklists and somebody hangs if there isn't something checked. Some of the things Mr. Koenig thought of, I never, never would have thought of, but there, there were good questions to raise. And the second point I would raise for you is, the burden is on the applicant to bring all this ma- material in front of the commission. It's not your burden to go find it, it's not staff's burden to go find it, and it certainly isn't the county's burden to pay for and commission these various studies, designs, everything. You have the right to ask the applicant to come forward with the good, uh, site plan information engineered, all this information about groundwater and, uh, daily usage of water, uh, probably about five other things in that letter, those are all the burden of the applicant. And this particular project turned out to be a major project, not, sort of came in under sheep's clothing, but that's what it apparently turned out to be. No, nothing wrong with asking somebody to document everything of the first time or the second time it comes in front of you, so you have a chance to actually study the thing and see what it is. So those are my two recommendations. I would offer it up, do the checklist myself, but all my loyalty is to the broadband authority at present.
We appreciate all your contributions there, thank you. Thanks. Um, I should mention, I should mention, just so members of the public are aware, this public comment period would be the only time tonight that you would have an opportunity to comment on, uh, the upcoming topics under Old Business, which would include, um, short broadband safety tower, um, ordinance and also proposed zoning ordinance on, uh, renewable energy facilities. So if you do wish to comment on either of those topics or anything else on the agenda, this is your time to do so. Yes, Ms. Miller. I love the fact it's a small community and we really know everyone's name.
Especially since I'm in your district.
Well, I better know your name, yeah.
I don't want to, uh, address any one particular item that the, uh, Planning Commission has been dealing with lately or that is on the agenda for Old Business, but in general, so much of your time, and your time is valuable, is spent haggling over things that ought to be clearly and precisely provided in the comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan must be detailed, it must be clear, and it must be enforced. The more you give in to special exception here and special exception there, and this special exception is permanent until someone decides they want to change it, the more you're going to waste a lot of your valuable time and the time and agony of the county dealing with things that should have been taken care of. People, citizens in general, have confidence in law and order when they know that laws mean what they mean, that regulations mean what they mean, and that public officials will enforce those regulations as they are written. I would, uh, I would urge you to put more of your time into finalizing a really good comprehensive plan and less of your time haggling over parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else wishing to comment? Yeah, sir, go ahead, go ahead and then I'll.
My name is Phil Fletcher, I live in Piedmont District, own property in a number of districts in Rappahannock County. I want to make a disclosure, uh, I've been contacted by three different solar companies in the last year about different possible solar projects in Rappahannock County, either representing them or possibly leasing land to them. Personally, I like the idea of renewable en- energy, um, I don't really like the looks of them, but, you know, I've lived around here probably as long as anybody in this room and I've probably been appearing for the Planning Commission more than some of the members are of age. Um, I remember going back to the, when the power line came from Sperryville to Washington and it came over the mountain under Page Bear at the time and everybody said, it's gonna look so horrible, it's gonna ruin the view of the county. The cell towers, when they came up, I talked to Mr. Henry about it as an appraiser, he wasn't on the Planning Commission at the time, and he said, well, it's kind of pro and con, the looks and the detriments of it. I oppose cell towers from a visual standpoint, it was proven in time that I was completely wrong to oppose cell towers. I don't like to admit I'm wrong. Um, maybe it's my nature, maybe it's because I'm from Rappahannock, I don't know. But in light of the last pandemic where there were shortages in everything in the community, and when I look at the zoning ordinances as proposed, uh, the amendments that are proposed, it would kill any solar in the county. There are two things that make an area accessible and viable. If you don't have electricity, not many people are going to live or work here. If you don't have a good quality of water, you aren't going to have it. We, our farm, uh, I think the farm I live on that's been in my family multi-generationally, uh, we had lights and warm water before power came in here in nineteen thirty-eight, was when power first came. Into my section of Rappahannock, my father's told me about the races to get electricity. I've also had the opportunity to look at the viability of America's power grid and if you keep up with the news and all, you'll know it's thirty or forty years at a date. If we, if we don't have, I think every, my farm I'm proud of, it's sustainable. When the county needing masks, I gave them twenty thousand masks, I had them on the farm because I was prepared. Maybe people viewed me as weird, but I was prepared for something like that happened. I keep four thousand gallons of fuel on hand on the farm all the time because I've been without electricity for ten, twelve, fourteen days. And I'm a quarter, less than a quarter mile from the main transmission line and a, less than a mile from the transmission station in Sperryville. I just looked at the proposed ordinance, which Mr. Koenig was nice enough to send me and just with the, I looked at it and I said, well, some of this doesn't really make much sense, but I looked at it, it, one line of it says, permit shall be no more than twenty years. Well, these things have an estimated life of thirty to forty years, so you're killing it right off the bat. I don't, you know, I asked Ms. Ishi, where does the transmission, the hundred and eighty-six KV transmission line cross the road between Sperryville and Washington? Do you know, do you remember? You pass it almost every day. I asked Mr. Sharp, do you know where it crosses? I mean, you've got a business in Sperryville, you live in Washington.
Does it cross there at Old Hollow Road?
Oh, uh, where?
Near, near Old Hollow Road?
No.
And, or up by the co-op?
It's closer to the co-op than Old Hollow Road, it's near the house that was moved, but anyway, after a certain amount of time, you don't, you, you don't notice these things. My son goes to school in Culpeper, my youngest son, and I pass the solar farms and there are a number of them in Culpeper and around it. And after the first time, I said, well, that's unusual. The second time, I said, well, I really, it doesn't, it's not nice, but it doesn't really bother me. And now, after ten trips, I don't even notice it's there. So I mean, everybody's looking at this visual impact, but one, it make, it's like these cell phones, which I was against twenty years ago and I was vehemently opposed to them because I thought it destroyed the scenic view. Now, I doubt that, I think there are six, seven cell towers in Rappahannock County and I don't know, when they were first built, I noticed them. Now, I, I look at it, for some reason, my mind blanks it out. Uh, and I think the same thing's true with the transmission lines. Don't worry about the visual, and everybody in this county is worried what my farm looks like. Well, that's fine, if the county wants to tell me what I'm gonna do on my farm, then pay me. If you don't, you know, unless you're giving me money and I've got to pay the expenses and I bought it and paid for it and my family's worked on it for over two-hundred-and-seventy years, I, I have a real objection to anybody coming up and telling me that I can't do something on my farm that I think needs done because of the visual aspect. I think that's not polite. Uh, if you, Ms. Jamison, years ago, um, was upset I didn't ma- I didn't keep a fence on my property maintained properly. And I went up to her and I said, Ms. Jamison, I love you dearly, but if you don't like it, there's a reason I keep it that way, uh, you're certainly free to go out and fix it. And if you want a pay to do it or something like that, but farmers are having a difficult time in this county. Uh, I personally have stopped farming the two farms that I own in Rappahannock because the expense guts, it wasn't worth it. I make more money renting my land out. The farm, if you want to have this county destroyed, you over-regulate it. And if you don't allow infrastructure such as, you know, these internet companies, which I don't understand, to be honest with you, but to put towers up and, or SatLink or whatever Elon Musk thing is, and if you don't prepare for a possible long-term power outage, I think you're really missing what the Planning Commission should do. I mean, I agree with Ms., this lady here, Ms. Miller, to a great extent, but, you know, you all need, I think one of the primary obligations of government is to make sure we have power and that we have clean water and that the populace has that. And if this, and if you don't allow that, I mean, in bold print at the end of the ordinance it says, no permit shall be for longer than twenty years, well, that cuts out thirty to forty, maybe fifty percent of the life of this solar field. Nobody's going to spend the money with all the other restrictions you want. And I'm not sure if you don't look at it globally or circumspectively, you might want a solar field in Rappahannock County so there was security of electricity for all the community citizens. How long would you live at your house, any of you, except maybe Mr. Henry? How long would you live there without electricity? How long, because you wouldn't have water, you wouldn't have heat, your stove wouldn't work, whether you have gas or the other, unless you have wood stoves in your house? How long would you stay in your house? And if you cut off opportunity for the citizens of Rappahannock to have an alternate affordable system of power, I think you're maybe making a mistake. I understand the visual aspects of Rappahannock, I love my farm, I sit out at my pool every day and day and night and I can't see a light. I'm really proud of that, I like that, I don't want to change that. I don't want to change Rappahannock in any way. We've had to change for internet service, everybody demanded, it's become a fundamental need and necessity. But that's a, that's extra, the satellites and all that stuff. But if you don't have electricity, we're back to nineteen thirty-eight. And I don't know many people in this room and I think, I know a good many of them, Tommy Taylor's family, it's been here since day one, good people, they could survive, Al Henry could survive, I could survive. I don't know how the rest of you would do, I don't know you all well, but, uh, I don't think you'd be living there in a month. uh, I don't think you'd be living there in a month. That, so I'm asking you to be more circumspect and look at this solar project. I'm not saying you should approve it. I don't know that I'd allow it on my land. I want to know, I've got a lot more questions. But if you don't, if you kill it at the get-go, you're going to have some real issues legally and with the general assembly. They might throw all your work out the door. So all I'm asking you to do is delay it and think about it and find out more what the real prospects are, what kind of screening, you know, how you could work with these people. Because it might become a resource that's dearly needed in Rappahannock, and if you cut it out, it would be years coming. Because if a, if the power grid fails, and I'm not saying I'm a doomsayer, but being that without it for ten, twelve days was pretty damn difficult. If I didn't have a portable generator, I would have had real problems. And not everybody can afford to have a portable generator. And, you know, you're supposed to represent all the citizens of the county. I, I've probably done as much to protect, my family's probably done as much over the years to protect the view shed as any other farm in Rappahannock. Uh, but I think a real mistake with that, really fine tuning this ordinance and making it more reasonable. This thing is taken from Madison or Falkir or Charlottesville. And they're all different. Rappahannock is a unique jewel. It's a diamond. Look at the shape of it, and it's a diamond, and it's our diamond. And if you don't protect it and let it be functional and have the tools that we need to go forward, I think you're making a mistake. It's your decision, but, and I'm sorry I took so long, but I really think it's important to consider, and I can tell you this, ordinance with the twenty-year permit life, nobody would invest whatever it costs. And then you lose that opportunity. If we'd done the thing about, that I wanted years ago, no cell towers in Rappahannock, and it was continued, where would we be today? You need to have flexibility. And you shouldn't remove that flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, it's a great foundation for our discussion to come. Anyone, anyone else wish to comment during the public comment period? Ms. Gressinger, please.
Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. The one thing I would address would be, on the back page of the agenda, was the short broadband. And that is something that's very interesting because I've listened to uh, the cell tower conversations when it was going on last year. To say that you're going to limit the height of these cell towers can lead to a problem because I listened to the lady who was giving the presentation. And when you reduce the height, you then reduce the effectiveness or the spread of what you're doing. So if you're going to reduce, uh, towers, you might have to end up adding, say, three instead of two. So what you're doing is adding more when you're trying to find fewer or fewer cell towers. I think that the pandemic brought up the importance that we do need broadband here. Um, and I, I commend the broadband authority. I think they're working forward to try to do that. Uh, the other thing I want to address is, um, development and how people might want to use their property in Rappahannock. Farmers and people who own property a lot of times need to find a way to maintain an income. And I'm going to give an example of Windsor Lodge, that's, um, five twenty-two. They came, the new owners a couple of years ago came before the board several different times because they were trying to formulate the different ways they could use their property. So it's sort of similar to something that we've just been facing recently. It's a person who's come in and they're trying to figure out a way that they can make their property work well. And I think they're taking their time. Uh, they're exploring different avenues. And so, uh, everyone has the right to say, no, we don't want it. And so that's a learning experience for the people who are trying to, uh, develop their property. So I think it, it can be a win-win if the county and the property owners are trying to, uh, work together. And I think that's a commendable thing. It's just going to take a while. So I think, I think we'll do it.
Anyone else?
Good evening, planning commissioners. David Conick from Stonewall Hawthorne District. I know that the, uh, the big issue for tonight, or what we thought was going to be the big issue, has been removed from the agenda. But I would like to urge the commission to revisit a topic that we had on our work plan last year. And that is all these uses that are allowed by right, special permit use and special exception use in the resource preservation zones. You know, the ordinance was written in nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-five, and a lot of these uses that are in there. Uh, I can remember sitting at that table and people like Pete Estes and Newble Miller telling me, oh, David, don't worry about that. Nobody's ever going to do that in Rappahannock County, so don't worry about it. And, uh, that was then, that was thirty-five or forty years ago, and they were probably right. They always, they always were. And, uh, now it's a different day. I mean, look what's happening down the road in Culpeper or Warrenton. Look at the big stadium or event center they've got in Gainesville. Back then, nobody thought anything like that would ever be built in Gainesville. There was nothing in Gainesville except the barter post. And so things are changing. And land is cheap here compared to other places. And so to assume that somebody's not going to come in here to propose these uses is really not in, in sync with the current realities. Uh, this application that was withdrawn, thank goodness, points up some of the inadequacies of the ordinance. For one thing, uh, look at the opposition that you had last month and at the Board of Supervisor meeting, for those of you that are aware of it. A lot of people were very upset just about removing the condition on the tourist home or the, whatever it is, the B and B that they, in the, in the house back there, in the back of the property. A lot of people were very upset about removing the condition about no subdividing. Uh, and from what I understand, a lot of people were very concerned about the application that was pending, that was going to come up for public hearing tonight. And remember last year when the thing on North Bowes Road, or was it South Bowes Road? I always get them mixed up, came up, where they wanted to have some dinners there, like once a month or something, like fifteen, eighteen people? The whole neighborhood got all bent out of shape, and then they sort of settled down. But people don't want these uses in their neighborhood. They don't want some ginormous event center. They don't want a resort. They don't want it, and I think the commission ought to recognize that. And we're in a position now where many, that's, that's not the only thing they don't want. There's a lot of things in that list that people just aren't aware of, like correctional facilities is another one. Stadiums is in there. But don't worry because the additional standards bump up the setback from seventy-five feet to a hundred feet for a lot of those uses. Now, you know that that's not going to ameliorate or satisfy most people. They don't want it in their neighborhood at all. And another twenty-five feet is not going to do the trick for them. And then you have things like, well, it has to be, look at the additional standards that would have applied to this thing. It said something about tennis courts and all that have to be screened. What does that mean, screened? Screened how? Screened by a fence, screened by trees? I don't know, and you don't know, nobody knows. And back then, nobody cared because, like they, like I said, nobody thought they were going to do it. Well, now it's different, and I think at a minimum, you need to review the list and decide. Some of those things just aren't appropriate anymore. If you don't remove them from the list, you've got to really spend some time on the additional standards. Like make those kind of uses with a huge acreage requirement, like a hundred acres as the minimum lot size, and require that it be buffered, that there be, that it be not a hundred feet from the nearest lot line, but a thousand feet or five hundred feet or something. But that it has to have trees, it's got to be surrounded so that it's not going to interfere with other people's uses and so forth. And then, and you know, we put in a road requirement for, for tourist homes and B and Bs. But for this kind of a use, that doesn't have ten people or six people or four people coming for the weekend, it's got over forty. And two events per week of two hundred people, yet there's no road requirement for this use. And a lot of them are like that. So it's not a, it's not a real difficult task, but it's something the, the planning commission really needs to pay attention to. And I urge you to do it now while nothing's pending. Instead of getting behind the eight ball when somebody applies, and then you're stuck with what, the inadequate provisions that we have. So I urge the commission to spend some time and do that. Thank you very much. I also want to commend Mr. Curry. I think he did a great job writing up, uh, the solar ordinance. And I, I hear what Mr. Fletcher said, and I think there's a lot of common sense in that. Maybe some of the limitations need to be changed, but I think Mr. Curry did a really good job capturing all the issues like screening and fencing and things like that. So thank you very much. I yield the rest of my time. Back to Bill.
Mr. Conick, I'm sure next year when you're on the Board of Supervisors, you'll have an input with your other members on board.
Anyone, anyone, anyone else? I will close the public comment period. Great. Um, thank you very much. Let's, uh, go ahead and just take, if you wouldn't mind, a five-minute break, and we'll get right back to it. Thank you.
Got your back, yeah.
I could tell. I felt it. I should have, I should have thought of this at the outset of the meeting. Um, we are, we're probably going to spend a fair amount of time in the two zoning ordinance amendment areas. One on, uh, short towers and the other on renewable energy. So I think it'd be prudent if someone would please put forward a motion to move the single item under new business, which is a preliminary review of special exception permit twenty-one dash zero six dash zero one pew, uh, re-subdivide a parcel in a subdivision per, uh, Rappahannock County Code one forty-seven dash forty. I would entertain a motion just to move that up ahead of, um, pardon me. Ahead of old business, please. Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
And I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Light, second. Any discussion? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Um, so we are going to, uh, move quickly to new business. And again, this is a preliminary review of special exception permit related to a re-subdiving of a parcel in a subdivision. And Ms. Summers, maybe you could just walk us through this as an introduction, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, this is a preliminary review. Present here tonight, here's a lot in Chester Gap subdivision, tax map one dash one two A. He is proposing to take this one lot and split it into two lots. Within your subdivision ordinance, any degree subdivision of a lot in a subdivision requires a special exception permit. Within the additional regulations for a special exception permit for additional standards, there are three additional standards. One, all lots shall run on a state-maintained street unless there is a homeowners association responsible for the repair and maintenance of the private street, and all parties using the same are members. Two, no existing covenant concerning resources may be violated. And three, the lot shall be of a size and configuration that is compatible with the other lots in the area. I did pull the covenant, check to see if there were covenants, and they were emailed to each one of the commissioners.
Okay, great. So this is a preliminary review. So the path forward is, um, if we decided tonight, we could, um, if we decided that everything, if we had complete information documentation, we, uh, schedule a public hearing for our next meeting on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Um, I think I would like to start as the applicant present. Okay, great. Would you, would you want to make any comments to us, just in advance of our brief discussion? And thank you for being here and your patience for waiting on us. Try to move things along, but it's not always possible.
Yeah, well, understood. This, and this is my first time here. I live in Wakefield District. My name's James Pugh. I've been a Rappahannock County resident for close to twenty years now. So I've been, you know, I'm building some houses right now in Chester Gap that are literally right on the property line there in Warren County. I've got four of them. I just, uh, sold two of them in the last month or so, and then I've got two more that are closing in the next thirty days. And they're two lots removed from this piece of property that we're talking about now. And that's why I was so attracted, the same person that I bought the first four from sold me this one that I want to subdivide. That's Sam and Maggie Smith. They're here tonight also. But, uh, we're not really looking for anything that's not currently, um, you know, in the code book, that, that area is zoned for village residential, minimum one-acre lots. This is two point two acres, so I'm wanting to split it in half to two lots that would be just over an acre. Um, I've already had the soil work done. They both, I've got three bedroom perks for the septic system and well. Everything works out on paper, no problems. I do know that per the comprehensive plan, that Chester Gap is one of the areas that the board's trying to, you know, Rappahannock County wants to promote growth in. And the houses are pretty much the exact use as the neighboring properties. It's going to be very similar house, similar size. And, you know, it's residential neighborhood. Everybody up there is, you know, similar sized houses and lots. So we're really not asking for anything that's not in the current zoning. It's just because it was split once before. We need the exception.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, um, for the, the introduction. And I think what I'll do is, uh, I have certain colleagues who have been around a lot longer than me. So I'll, I'll ask if anyone has any questions for the applicant and, um, okay, Mr. Henry, go ahead.
So actually, this property was subdivided in nineteen seventy-eight. And that was a, apparently Mount Royal was five point, this was a four, five point four, eight acre lot under Mount Royal in nineteen sixty-nine. And then it was subdivided in two thousand and six into the two acre lot sizes. So this is actually not a re-subdivision, but a re-re subdivision. So this is the third division of this parcel. And our ordinance says, any, just one re-division, and this is a double re-division, I guess you would call it. So it doesn't quite match up with the ordinance. And, um, this week I asked about covenants on the property. And I think all the board members got copies of this. And, and it says here, uh, these covenants, um, these Ridge Estates.
Lee Ridge Estates, yes, sir.
Yeah. Number three here, these covenants were from July twenty-fifth, two thousand and seven. The third item here says, only one permanent residence shall be erected or placed upon the property, and no structure or temporary, uh, character is permitted. So the covenant says that you could build one lot, one house on this two point two acre lot as of the re-division. So you could build one house on two acres. It doesn't say you can subdivide it and on the same original property have two. So I think you got a conflict with your covenants in subdividing this lot and building a house.
Well, if we subdivide the lot into two lots, then it's still one house, one permanent resident.
But the original covenants, you had a two acre lot, and it said you could have one house on this two acre lot. It didn't say you could have two houses on two one-acre lots. So I, I think you got a problem here with your.
On that current piece of property, right now, there are, when it was subdivided, there's three lots. Two of them are approximately two acres, and one of them's one acre. So when they subdivided that property originally, they'd set it up with a one acre lot.
Well, this doesn't say anything here. This says one house per lot. So, and that was the origin, and these covenants apply to the lots that were created at that time, which is a two acre and changed lot. You can have one house on these two acres, whether it's one lot, two lots, or three lots. So I think you got a conflict here that you need to rectify. Either you need to go back to all. need to rectify. Either you need to go back to all the people that were part of this division and get them to say it's okay to re-subdivide this and have two houses. Or maybe you can find some title company someplace that will ensure this exception, because you could build a house, and if somebody reads this, and take exception to it, and not get title insurance on the sale. So, I think you've got a problem here.
Would you allow Maggie and Sam to speak to this, because they're the ones that actually wrote those covenants with their lawyer?
Sure. That's fine. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission. I'm Sam Smith, and my profession was a general contractor. And I did what you say is true, but wasn't, it's kind of out of context. They need a two-acre, if you was able to divide it by code, which y'all could do, then you can't put two houses on it. Now, maybe that the wording didn't, wasn't right, but that's, that was the intention. That was my intention, because I, I'm the one that drew up the covenant. It was not, not intended, if the land was legally, could legally be divided, then you were able to do that, and then not put two houses on, on an acre. And...
So, your original subdivision that you did in two thousand and seven, how many lots did you create?
Was actually three.
You created three lots?
Yeah, one, one two-acre, and two two-acres, which would make three lots. And at that time, three lots you could do without going to the planning and zoning.
Those three lots today are still three lots?
Still three lots.
Okay. Well, you've got an ambiguity here, and you're lucky that you only have two other people that were part of the subdivision. I really think you need to go get something signed by these two people waiving any legal claim or saying it's okay for you to re-subdivide your lot and have two houses. I think that's a safe thing that you need to do.
You're saying the other two lots were part of the initial five acres.
When these covenants, these covenants, whatever land that these covenants affected in two thousand and seven, okay, wherever covenants, you say it was three lots. He has one now, and there's two other lots, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, those other two landowners, they, you could need to get an attorney draw up a page, probably a one-page document, that said it's okay for you to re-subdivide this lot and to create two lots.
Basically modify the covenant.
You go, it's a, well, it's a modification, or it's, it's, yeah, it's a modification, or giving you express clarification that you can do it. Then I think legally, you're in clear.
And just to be clear, we're talking, just, I want to make sure we're talking about the July twenty-fifth, two thousand and seven, Lee Ridge Estates, Chester Gap, Virginia Covenants and Road Agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, that's the one that you drafted, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Did you bring a copy with you?
Um, I'll highlight it. I'll highlight it, the item that I'm talking about.
Pardon the reach. There you go. Yep.
Um, one other question I'd like, I know we were talking about having a state road frontage, and you could have X amount of lots. Well, one of these lots does face the state roots, I guess everybody here familiar with Chester Gap, six-ten, the main road? It's, you go up.
One of the two lots subdivided will be at the corner of Lee Ridge.
It's going, yeah, be on a state road, six-ten. One wood.
Right.
And then the other one would've been interior.
Okay.
So, I don't know if that makes any difference or not, in y'all's eyes or viewing, but...
We've got a homeless association, so I think it was a homeless. She said it was homeless.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Henry. Any, any other comments or questions?
Well, you were just saying that one of these lots fronts on a state road, but it's not going to enter from the state road, is that correct?
No, because you couldn't put two driveways that close. That, when it's done, you'd have, you'd, you'd create a hazard. So, you'd come in, actually, only Lee Ridge to it, but it does have frontage.
Yeah, yeah. And what is the, was there originally an entrance off of the state road? Because there's that paved area that comes in off the side there. What is that?
No, that, that's just a entrance that the state requires you to have when you put more than two lots. More than two lots, then you've got to have what's similar to a commercial entrance. I, I think that's a term for it.
Okay.
Uh, and then you put whatever after that. So, it was five, or it, it was three, actually, but now we're trying to, you know, get one of them split, one of the two acres split.
Right. I've seen the property.
Okay. Which is, Mr. Pugh, I mean, he, I've known him for years. He builds an excellent product, the excellent home, and you could go to the end and look at the four he's already done in, in Warren County. Go to the end of Lee Ridge, and you can see two on each side. But it wouldn't be any question that he wouldn't do a good product, have a good product.
I don't think we have any question. I don't have any question about a good product. I've just got a legal question. I don't want to create a lot that we could get sued over for violating their covenants. Their covenants take precedence over our zoning ordinance.
Right. That, that covenant needs to be straightened out, or, or, or either abandoned by the people that are, are subject to it, or modified by the people that were subject to it, I believe. And that's what Mr. Henry's saying. I, I would agree with that. Otherwise, you may have a title issue at some point down the road, and we may have a problem.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Shuland, anything to add?
No, on its face, I have no problem with it. I, I agree with Mr. Henry. Covenants seem to dictate otherwise at this moment.
Okay. So, one, one, one action we can take tonight is just go ahead and schedule this for a public hearing. It'll have to go to the Board of Supervisors after the Planning Commission, or we could send it on now. But I, I realize there's this question on the covenant, so I think it might make sense to, to reconvene next month and have a public hearing to see if any, if any one up there, Chester Gap, wishes to comment on the proposed re-subdivision. So, I'd entertain a motion and whatever.
Could I, can I say one other clarifying question? I think I got this, but just to confirm it simply. There, the, separate from this covenant issue, it was a five-ish acre lot when you started subdividing it, and after this subdivision, it would still be no more than five lots. So, you haven't gone beyond what was allowed under zoning with the original parcel. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And that, the main thing for the covenants was to keep the house, I had no idea that this would come up, but to keep the quality of the house, the, being built, going to have standards. And you almost had to have covenants for the borrowed money if somebody, homeowner wants to borrow money. I mean, that, you got to have some.
Right.
And so, that was, it was not to try to stop somebody from doing something that, if you know what I mean. I mean, I don't know, I, I wouldn't have done it if I knew that. That's not the, that was not the intent.
Yeah. Is the Lee's Ridge Estates just that five acres?
Uh, now, it went, at once upon a time, we had fifty-seven acres in Rappahannock County there, but when they did the boundary adjustment out by, what, two thousand and five, was that? They took fifty-seven acres of ours, and it was in Rappahannock, and put it in Warren.
You're a lucky man.
Was that lucky?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe.
You've got a lot more divisions.
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
No, it was not very many.
But anyway, either way, that, that's what, that's what happened there. And then, I'm not sure the covenants goes in and takes care of the Warren County side.
Does that both sides of Lee's Ridge, Lee Ridge?
No, just, just the east side.
Just the right side?
Yeah, the, the left side has not been developed yet.
That's not part of this.
Not part of it. Just the east side. When you make, turn north, turn right on Lee Ridge from six-ten, it's on the right-hand side, which is the east side of the road there.
You, you're absolutely sure that these two thousand and seven covenants only apply to these three lots? Nothing that went into Warren County is...
I'm not...
Well, it does apply to Warren County.
These covenants of Lee's apply to Warren County?
Yes, to the, to the lots, the ten-acre lots, and, and...
Any, you need to go to an attorney, a local state attorney. You understand our question. Any lot that are subject to these two thousand covenants, they have to sign a release of this condition, modify the covenant, and eliminate it, whether it's two lots, whether it's twenty lots, and whether it's two in Rappahannock or fifteen in Warren County. Anybody that's subject to these lots, to this condition in two thousand and seven, has to sign. Any lot part of those covenants. Do you understand?
That's going to be tough to do. I mean, not that we've made enemies with them people, but some people just...
You need to go to an attorney and talk to them. We're, we're not practicing law. We're just doing zoning. Okay?
Okay.
There's an attorney right there, right here.
Which one?
The middle one.
Middle one?
Yeah. Looks like Bonnie and Clyde.
Oh, crap. He laughed, he laughed about it. He must know something I don't know.
He probably does.
Okay. So, what can we do here for the applicants to keep this rolling while they sort, sort out the covenant question?
They can just postpone it for a month.
They're going to have to postpone or something. They're going to need to get that straightened out, I think.
Okay. All right. Thank, all right.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging in there so long.
Do we need a motion here?
Nope. We're just... No, I mean, we can... Well, no, I think, I think we're just waiting. We're just going to table it. So, I mean, yeah, we can make a mo, if, Al, do you want to just make a motion to table this to our next meeting?
Make a motion that we table it until July meeting.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Yeah. Mr. Kohler, any discussion?
Let's make sure the applicant's clear that we're tabling it.
Kohler. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you.
Hey, would you, can you say something now? We tabled it for a month, and if they have problems, let us know.
Yeah. We did, so we, what we did is we just tabled this, this application until next month. And during the interim period, if you have any questions at all, Ms. Summers is a good contact person. And if you have any questions about what needs to be done, just contact her, and she'll make sure to put one of us in touch with you.
And if you're not ready for next month, let her know. Okay?
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, our topsy-turvy agenda, we're now back to old business. And so, we have two items. The first item is a review of a potential zoning ordinance amendment for short broadband public safety towers. And during the break, I talked to Mr. Curry, and he was kind enough to introduce this to us and provide us some context for our discussion. Just to point out that the Board of Supervisors has already agreed with, if we also agree on the Planning Commission, to convene a joint public hearing at the July seventh regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. So, check your calendars. And if we end up in a position where we've got language we're comfortable putting forward for a public hearing, then the motion tonight on this first item under old business would be basically to put forward, propose language, ordinance language, and then also authorize, authorize a joint public hearing with the Board of Supervisors. So, that's where we're headed. And Mr. Curry, if you would just kind of provide some context, and then we'll, we'll get going.
Okay, if I dress you from here?
That, if you could up here, if you don't mind, or do you need, would you rather sit down, because you've got all your stuff there?
We need to make edits up from that area.
Yeah, just, so, lingering's not great.
So, Planning Commissioners, I think you're aware that the Board of Supervisors have been working with a peer group, the broadband authority, to try to facilitate expansion of broadband services to all areas of the community. And one of the ways that they believe that can be hastened through their conversations with broadband providers is to make short towers more readily available to those providers. The Board of Supervisors, in going through the comprehensive plan, recognized that at that time, and the language in the comprehensive plan supports a non-public hearing route for zoning approval of towers for broadband and public safety if they're under eighty feet. The zoning ordinance right now includes an exemption from all zoning requirements for wooden poles that are under, up to eighty feet, as documented. And wooden poles are pretty tricky to deal with at eighty feet tall. You can't really move around them. If you want to put them on a mountain, it's pretty much impossible. So, instead of, instead of, of exempting completely from the ordinance, these short towers that are not wooden, the board felt it would be more appropriate to permit them administratively. That way, you can put some reasonable conditions on how that administrative permit process would flow through. If you recall, the board referred this to the Planning Commission some months ago, and then, as the discussion came up about solar, this was an opportunity to piggyback on that joint public hearing timeframe to handle this at the same time. So, with all of that preamble, there's an ordinance attached to the agenda. You can see, if you flip through that ordinance document, which would be used to amend, the first page after whereas, et cetera, is just the removal of the current blanket exemption for those wooden poles. So, if you're going to have zoning processed for the short towers of any manufacturer, then you don't need the blanket exemption. That's, that's a, on the next page, starting at line eighty, is where you get into the meat of it. If you recall, the telecommunications article sets up permits for several different categories of facilities, categories one through four. So, this would just add a category five, and the definition for category five is shown on the screen, is that it would be a personal R. S. facilities for broadband or public safety communications that are eighty feet in height or less, including all antennas necessary, including microwave dishes for data transmission. So, that, for other tall facilities still, until it's otherwise entered, if modified, microwave dishes are prohibited in your ordinance unless that is waived by a body. This specifically says that microwave dishes are acceptable for these short towers, only if those microwave dishes have a face area no more than eight square feet. And the facility may be used for the parcel owner's use or for distribution or relates others in Rappahannock County or needed areas. That similar language was in the exemption before. And basically, you can have a tower on a parcel. It doesn't have to serve that parcel. This is intended to provide service to broader areas of the community. Chances are, the person who owns that parcel will get some sort of perk from whoever puts the tower up, or maybe it's... So, that's the definition. It sets it apart from the other types of towers, which, other types of facilities which are co-locations or a brand-new tower, which is category four. And those category fours are like you dealt with last year for the Stravlin Tower that went through a lengthy process. The broadband provider comes in, and they know they have to go through a lengthy process with multiple public hearings. There's a lot of risk there, and they may not be willing to take that risk. So, this provides more guarantee if they check certain boxes. Those certain boxes include a fee, an administrative fee of fifty dollars. There's no advertising required. And then, the requirements listed in lines ninety-five and below. So, first, it makes clear that in order to get one of these approved, you have to meet the following, notwithstanding everything else in this article, because other sections of this article say you have to have a public hearing, you have to do certain things. And what this is saying is, for category five, forget those things, you only have to do these things that follow. One, you don't need a special use permit or a special exception. It's administrative zoning permit. Two, shall not be located within one thousand feet of a primary highway. That's a point that the Planning Commissioner may think a different number is appropriate. But most of our critical view sheds and most of our traffic are on those primary highways and roads through route numbers less than six hundred. And so, if you're a thousand feet off that, and you're eighty feet tall, chances are it's not going to be very good to the traveling public. The facility shall bear a coating that is neutral and non-reflective. So, that's subjective, and ultimately, the zoning administrator would have to be determining reviewing these permit applications to see, in her opinion, whether it meets that. Tower lighting is prohibited, even though it wouldn't be required by the FAA at less than one-hundred-and-ninety-nine feet. You want to make sure there's no light. The facility should not be located within a 100-year flood plain. Construction of the facility shall not significantly alter existing surface features. Facility shall be constructed, shall not be constructed with wetland fills. Construction of the facility should not cause water diversion and shall not require significant deep corrosion. These items are requirements of your other more stringent towers, and it seemed appropriate. These are, the idea here is to infill a tower where it makes sense and doesn't require a lot of work. You don't want to go have somebody plunking this down in a sensitive area. And lubricite plan, which is very onerous, as you know, a, a section of 170 dash 120 filings. A lot of things you have to do for that to be an engineering plan. And lubricite plan, the applicant shall submit a scaled plot plan that shows where the tower's gonna be relative to the parcel. But we note, so the zoning administrator can know where it is, but we don't need an engineering plan. Uh, the facility should be located so its fall zone is contained within the parcel tonne which the facility is constructed. The fall zone of the facility shall consist of a radius equal to or greater than 110% of the height as measured horizontally from the base of the facility. Some, some of these towers may not be 80 feet, might be 50 feet or something like that. So should be a sliding scale with that fall zone. However, it says a shorter fall zone radius may be approved if there's, including the permit application, notarized statement or statements from owners of adjacent parcels, say that they're okay. So for short tower limits, the neighbor may say, I don't care if it falls on my property. And if that's the case, that's, that's between them. There's no requirement for a setback from the owner or parcel owner's home or building. If they're okay taking a risk of a tower that has to be building code anyway, falling on their house, that's their pro. And then lastly, in addition, drawing, showing, opposed facilities, including the location of all underground wires, cables, conduits, dimensions, microwave dishes, et cetera, need to be provided for review and permitting. It's, it's really just that simple. Uh, the last section on roll back taxes, just expanding that to state that the only type of tower that would pull you out of land use would be category four, which is a brand-new tower that's taller than 80 feet.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that introduction. And if I could just put this in context and, at the risk of restating the obvious. Number one, from just a community and policy perspective, we have a real problem providing broadband to more than just those people who are immediately adjacent to, you know, the Verizon, the CenturyLink hookups in the county, and those are very limited areas. We have at least one internet service provider that uses point-to-point type system with generally, um, access points that are in trees. And so someone like that who's here providing a service in our community, that's an obvious starting point for expanding broadband service. It's helping providers who have already proven an ability to provide service in our county with an option for hardening their infrastructure. So, um, that's, that's really a part of the reason why the Board of Supervisors is eager to see this change to the zoning ordinance. Next, um, I think it's important to keep in mind as we go through this discussion tonight. We are looking at this language. It's relatively limited in terms of what would be changed. We do not need to kill ourselves over the details. This will go to a joint public hearing at Board of Supervisors, but, with the Board of Supervisors. But certainly, um, everyone who wishes to provide input and change the language should do so. But I just ask that you keep in mind the fact that our community, we've seen it the last year during the pandemic, needs desperately expanded broadband service in the county. And this is a small step in the right direction to provide existing internet service providers, providers who have shown an interest in our county with at least one option for hardening their infrastructure. And if we're lucky, maybe we'll all end up with Elon Musk Starlink and the idea of towers anywhere will become a moot point within a matter of months. But for the time being, that's not yet the case. So that's all I want to say on this. And I, I hope we can come up with any changes relatively quickly tonight. And then we will all meet again on July 7th at the Board of Supervisors. At least that's my hope, and hash out the final details. Anyone wish to comment on the proposed draft changes?
I have a question. Is the, is this, is this height similar to what a, like a ham radio tower would be? I mean, they.
Those are a lot by right.
Yeah.
But they could be any height that somebody builds. 80 feet is generally a tree canopy height. And so I think that's ultimately why that number was there. Of course, if you're in a field, the tree canopy is not that important. But that's the idea. The, if you're gonna get any sort of coverage, you need to at least get about to the tree canopy height.
Right.
And so if you can get a elevation of a property with a little bit of elevation relative to adjacent parcels and get tree canopy height, then maybe you could do some, some good. And there was a mention in public comment that, well, maybe you need more than 80 feet. And that may be the case. Uh, but that's when the impacts get greater and public hearing is necessary. So an applicant, a company is trying to provide service will have to decide, do I want to sure bet if I check the boxes or do I want to go through the public hearing process to go try to get some tall towers?
And there is a type of tower. It's called.
The company Rhone.
Rhone, R-H-O-N-E, if you ever want to look that up. And I think that this proposed height probably fits somewhat within sort of their standard configuration, their lattice-type collapsible towers that'd be assembled in sections.
So what we're looking for here is a provider to come in. We're not looking for individuals to say, I'm gonna put a tower on my property and.
So I don't think it could be, I don't think this door could be used prospectively because it mandates a particular use broadband or public safety. So unless you bring a broadband or public safety use with you to your application, Michelle's not gonna approve it.
And I guess the only thing I look at is I just don't like the word neutral for color because it's, what's the definition of neutral? White, white is neutral.
You know, I think there was some consternation over that language during the original development. If, if the body can come up with something better. Ultimately, the zoning administrator is gonna have to make interpretations of what that means relative to what is submitted. And, you know, shiny metal is not this.
Right.
Uh, but something that's flat and similar to the background might be. And if it's in trees or in a field, that might be different.
Right. I think that's right. Yeah, and obviously, the Sperryville cell tower is a perfect example of that.
We learned our lesson there.
Yeah.
Sky blue versus human green is a world of difference.
Big difference. So, um, yeah, it would be camouflage within, camouflage that makes sense with the place where the tower would be sited, something along those lines.
Apparently, we're not gonna worry about being close to a secondary road. This is something we're not worried about.
And so the, you can include whatever requirements that you think are necessary and protected. Uh, but the more restrictions you place, the fewer locations towers can go and the less likely they'll solve the problem that it's intended to solve. So there's, there's this balance point of setback from a, not stated here is that it's principal use, so it has to meet principal setbacks, right? Unless otherwise stated. So from a primary road, that principal setback boosts way up to 1,000 feet.
Primary road is Route 211 and 522.
211 and 522, 231.
And Mr. Curry is prepared tonight. Just so you know, if you have specific, specific changes, specific changes or edits, um, he can put those in to the current draft. And then those would go forward if we just, if we agreed to, to join a, join a joint public hearing with the Board of Supervisors on July 7th.
And we covered the schedule at your last meeting. And just because the Board of Supervisors meeting is on Wednesday, it gave us an extra week. So the public hearing notice for this and the next topic must be to the paper next week and then be in the newspaper next week and the week after. But to do that, there should be a actual line strike-through copy available for you for the public to know what it is that they're commenting on.
Yeah, so let's get to that point and then we'll, we'll.
Is there anything about if the tower is abandoned or no longer used?
No, so you can include it.
80-foot tower is not a big deal. It might be ugly though.
And, and we're basically looking right now, I'm presuming we're looking at like Piedmont Broadband, Rhone, whatever that is.
Rhone is.
Rhone is the tow, the manufacturer of the tower.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Now, it could be, uh, it could be a county wants to pick a tower up somewhere.
Is it like a little lattice tower?
Yep.
Well, it could be anything, quite frankly, uh, as long as it's less than 80 feet and it meets the other requirements. Now, chances are, it's going to be, the cost is an impediment to development. So this will be structurally, you know, built to meet the minimum need that whoever needs it. So they're not gonna put a gigantic thick tower up if that's not needed to support the law.
But yeah, Piedmont Broadband, they had, they're the ones who had a schematic of what these Rhone towers look like, so.
They talk about carrying them up the mountain.
Yeah, because if you put it on a hilltop.
Hold it together when you get there.
Yeah.
After they carry the country up.
After you.
Yeah, right. So does anyone want to make any line edits or additions? I think Mr. Sharp and Mr. Kohler have some good points here on color and then also on removal. So maybe we could craft something. It looks like Miss Ishi is ready, so.
Yeah, I just had a kind of a number of questions to, to sort of start with. Um, if that's all right. I, so the, the provision, I'm sorry, I can't pull it up for some reason. But if I'm, I'm remembering from memory, 170 dash 12, is that what it is?
170 dash 12 is exemption.
The exemption, the current exemption, and that is limited, that exemption is limited to the, the provider, the landowner, the, the subscriber, I'm trying to pull up the memory language. The subscriber himself, basically, can put up that, that pole. So it's limited, like if you get Piedmont Broadband, you can put up a hole in your yard and put Piedmont Broadband for your own, your own use and maybe some of the adjacent properties, but it's not for commercial use. Is that, am I remembering right?
Well, this is allowed to transmit to neighbors.
Exempted from the provisions of this chapter is any all equipment for the transmission and reception of wireless broadband and base communication services when such equipment is installed on the property owned by a subscriber or such others. And when such equipment is mounted on existing structures, pursuant to wouldn't until the whole plan. Which project, which project, more than 80 feet above.
So you're, so back up a few, you just passed it via, for the subscriber's own property.
Yeah, this is the antenna, reception, transmitter, equipment exempted, may only be used for the subscriber, reception, distribution or relay, or reception, distribution or relay to other subscribers in Rappahannock County or immediately adjacent, adjacent counties. So you can do that.
So could you?
You have to be a subscriber, but once you're a subscriber, you can send it to anybody else.
Okay. So the difference with, this would be that, uh, you, you don't have to be a subscriber. This could, somebody could come in and instead of the Scrabble Tower, they could put towers, you know, CWS or whoever, CS, CSW. Could come in and, and by right, if they met the requirements laid out in here. Without any public hearing, they could put 80-foot towers all along 522, basically.
1,000 feet off.
If they stay away from.
1,000 feet, right. And so. So the, the distinction is for those, you need a public hearing for every single tower. And for these categories, you need a public hearing now to decide that it's okay blanket going forward. So one public hearing versus one off for each one.
Okay. And I had asked you this before, so I think I already know the answer to this, but just to clarify. So are there other jurisdictions in Virginia that have this kind of exemption for 80-foot towers?
So I don't know exactly this, but the Code of Virginia requires us to have administratively reviewable projects for towers that are 50 feet and shorter that are along a right-of-way or utility line. So this is basically expanding that 50-foot to 80-foot inward.
So what you just described would be by right?
That's by right has to be, it can be administratively reviewable, which means it would be used in a permit. Just like the by right residence in a residential district. It still needs a permit. And it's a reviewed administrative. You gotta make setbacks on all the other things.
Okay, so so far, so far, and I'm, I'm sorry, Miss Ishi, I'm just, I wanna keep track. So, so far, we might have a change to the color, uh, language and the use of the word neutral. And I can think of a way to navigate that maybe. And this is our chance to provide input here. And of course, we can do so in, in July. But I think it's worth at least getting these on paper for public hearing advertising. And then the second one was removal. I think that's really important. And there was, I remember in the cell phone, cell tower discussion, not to go too far afield, Mr. Curry. The cell tower discussion, I recall that there was, in our local ordinance, a bonding requirement related to cell tower removal that was inconsistent with state code. I just want to make sure that on something like this, that we would not be prohibited under the law from imposing a removal requirement.
Oh, I think you can require removal. I don't think you can ask for a bond to care to it.
Okay, okay, alright. So that's the piece that was inconsistent with state code. Okay. So we got removal, we've got color. I'm sorry, Miss Ishi.
No, that's fine. That's, those are good. Um, trying to figure this out too. So that the, the state, the state administrative review eligible projects, as I understand them, they are for 50-foot towers and they are limited to structures with attached wireless facilities that are not more than 10 feet above the tallest existing utility pole within 500 feet, not located within boundaries of historic district and is designed to support small cell facilities, which are an enclosure of no more than six cubic feet volume, although you have eight square feet, I think, if I remember.
That's a surface area versus cubic area.
Yeah. Um, so that's not that different from the state requirement for 50-foot towers. But the other, there are additional requirements under the state code for, for the 50-foot towers. And all jurisdictions except us, um, that I'm aware of, codes have that in that, that 50-foot.
Well, we do, because we have all the state code.
Yeah, we don't have the 50-foot, okay.
Now, as I told you, Neil earlier, my, my last community required no public hearings for non-commercial towers as opposed to commercial towers. I've used that to build four 300-foot towers and 190-foot tower without a public hearing.
You can leave that there. Okay.
For public safety, non-commercial.
Why do you have that experience?
And then, um, I think that was the majority of my questions. I, I, so, oh, I know, the other important question is, so I understand, I think, the intent behind this, that we're trying to make this, you know, we're trying to address broadband.
We've gotta do something. And my, my personal hope is that three months from now, we got towers. Why, we, we don't need towers, but, I mean, this whole Starlink thing is very much in beta. It's not gonna solve our, our overall problem in the near to midterm. And frankly, we know what's worked so far. And Mr. Frazer, my colleague on the Board of Supervisors, has said very well that we're gonna end up with a patchwork of internet service providers, most likely. There's not gonna be a, uh, one solution for Rappahannock County because in part, our topography is difficult. And two, the return on investment of fiber at every home is not there for, for us to think realistically about that. So this is really just a small step toward at least paving a way for someone, hopefully, to expand and strengthen their service in the county.
And I would ask, the, the great distinction is, um, application at risk through public hearing, which the provider may say, it's just not worth my time. I'm gonna invest a lot of money to figure out if I'm gonna be able to put a tower up or not. And so I'm not gonna risk that because it's already thin margins of any, anyway. So this would shift that balance to, if I check the right boxes, this is what I can, what I can do. Now, that is a foundation. Ultimately, what you're, you will do here is lay out for the public to come tell you whether this makes sense or not. They need to have this public hearing, allow the public to say, I don't care how important broadband is. I don't want these 80-foot towers anywhere. Make it 60 or 40 or whatever. Stick to 50. You hear it from the public and they tell you that, and then, you know, that's, that's where the boards can, can go to. But you've gotta put something out there for the public to give you feedback on.
Okay.
We've got 7,000 people in the county, very sparsely populated, very high cost to, to get broadband to people. The more obstacles, the more expense, the more regulations you put on it, the less success you're gonna have on having people come in here willing to, to work with us to do broadband. I had a house that burned in Shenador County last July. Rebuilt a house, got it done today. I'm in the country, rural area, call Shentel, they came. Okay, you can have wireless broadband or you can have wire. Which one do you want? I had two options. And I'm, I'm getting great broadband, everything for 60 bucks a month by wire. So, you know, and that's. So, you know, and that's across the mountain. So we have to be reasonable and, and make it fairly easy for whoever is gonna come in here to work with, if we're gonna have any success, so.
Alright, so we've got, we have two, so far, I have two potential changes. Does anyone else wanna put forward anything, then Mr. Curry can take the draft and quickly flush out some language and move forward.
I'd kinda like to see a sliding scale when it comes to the distance from the primary roads. Shorter towers as they get closer, I mean, there's power lines going right down five twenty-two and two eleven. I don't see how a short pole, ten feet behind it, or.
Well, the, the state administratively reviewable will tell us we must permit fifty feet and shorter relative, the length relative to the existing poles, we have to do that, so. Uh, but if they wanna get above that, it'd be at eighty.
So they can't do that within a thousand feet.
Yeah, we have to allow that, and someday we'll have our ordinance to catch up to that.
You know, the secondary roads, it's, so they could put it ten feet off the rim.
Then it'd meet the principal setbacks, which is gonna be, you know, whatever the front yard setback is for.
Or the fall, or the fall.
Or the falls, that's parcels.
Eighty feet, yeah.
And there's no, um, there's no limit on the number of, if they just, if, I mean, it, there's obviously.
Somebody wants to put fifteen of these eighty foot towers on their one parcel, and they have more money than sense they could do. So you could say one per parcel, but maybe it's a thousand acre parcel, and it should have four.
I, I think you, they would go into hypotheticals now, keep it simple.
The commercial side is gonna resolve most of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think we need to think through the, the impacts of this a little bit, so that, I apologize if that seems to be taking extra time. But, um, I, I also wonder, do we know if, um, do we have providers that have said that they would use this? I know, listening to the broadband committee meeting, Shantel was asked, you know, will, will this suit your needs? And they said, well, we don't know, we could need fifty foot towers, we could need eighty towers, eighty foot towers, we could need a hundred and twenty. Um, when we, if we have, if we pass this, it's allowed, point blank for anybody. So do we have, you know, and it's fairly broad language, so do we have a sense of exactly how tailored this is to a need? Or is this just, are we, how, how?
Well, we've talked to providers outside of meetings and talked about this sort of thing, but ultimately, it's a, it's that, those companies need to manage their entire footprint, how are they gonna provide service to an area? And, and they may need one tall tower and three short towers, or two tall towers and five short towers. They will put that puzzle together, but if they can do it in a way with Scrabble's already permitted as a tall tower, and they can use a hub that is spoke with small towers, then they can do that. You know, so it may be some combination.
And then the ordinance, there are a number of ordinance, thank you, there are a number of ordinance provisions that apply to our current categories that would not apply to this, um, which would include, you know, a lot of the things that we have in the application standards, I mean, you're trying to streamline this, obviously. Um, but we don't have any provisions for, do we have provisions in this? I'm trying to remember, for termination, you know, what happens if they discontinue use, and then.
That's something.
Yeah, Mr. Sharp, please.
And the removal of facilities, if they're in, you know, also collapsed antenna support structures in one seventy dash one oh eight fourteen. Um, you know, there are a number of provisions all the way through that have not been picked up here that look like they could be productive, I didn't, didn't package them all, but.
We also don't tell you how to take your barn away if it falls down, so, you know, there's, if it's, some point, an eighty foot tower that's crumpled on somebody's property, that's their problem. And, and do you wanna get in to regulate that? You can.
We currently do regulate it, though. That's currently.
For the short towers, yeah, you can, but you don't have.
Okay. Um, and then, Mr. Shulman, are you on your sliding scale on height, are you?
No, I'm, Mr. Curry.
Okay, alright, so I'll strike that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so so far, we've got color, and we've got removal, and, um, I think the one per parcel I'll strike, because I think that could be problematic based on parcel size. Um, but again, remember, we're, we are going to put this out for a public hearing with the Board of Supervisors, and we'll hear from the public on whatever we adopt. So other than those two items, any, anything else, anyone?
Yep, thank you. One, I think fairly simple strikes, change would be, I would propose that we strike from the first paragraph or immediately adjacent counties. I don't think we want to put up towers here that don't serve, uh, people in Rappahannock County. I wouldn't wanna get in a situation, that doesn't say they're limited to serving Rappahannock County, but I feel like it should be, these are here to serve Rappahannock County residents. Um, so I think you can just stretch or immediately adjacent counties.
Well, we may need to pick up from another county.
I think that's a quick pro quo, so there's a public safety.
You could place or with and.
Well, no, because then, then it would be required to serve another county.
Yeah, I think, I, I think it'd probably be hard pressed to put a tower up in Rappahannock County that isn't gonna serve some part of Rappahannock County, whilst it also serves somewhere else.
Well, then, then it shouldn't matter that it's, then it shouldn't matter if you remove the language.
I think you should leave it in. Where is it?
It's in the very first paragraph of the definition of the category.
Thank you.
So in the comprehensive plan, um, starting at page ninety-eight, the new language that was added, um, uh, that was added in December, has a lot of verbiage about how to do obscuring, blending, or camouflaging. Um, and I, I wonder if it might not be helpful to add some of those concepts in to this. I know, uh, maybe you could do it in the, in the, in the sense of saying the zoning. I, the way it was done in the comprehensive plan is, is it mandated certain of these, uh, camouflaging things. It was visible from the Shenandoah National Park, and it was visible from the scenic byway or historic resources, designated historic resources, um, or when it was located on Presto Ridges. Um, so then that, in those cases, an applicant had to camouflage it, and if it was not in one of those categories, then an applicant could, had to show that it was not technically feasible to camouflage it. Would that be something that could be somehow included in this?
Cam, I would, I would just say, this goes back to me, this goes back to the color thing, it'd be cam- camouflage suitable, camouflage suitable for the tower's proposed location, or something like that.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
Or you could say so as.
Camouflage as possible.
So as to camouflage.
I think the distinction.
As possible to the location.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think the distinction is between camouflage versus screening. Camouflage is something you would do to the tower itself. I think screening would be an alternative to, to camouflage.
Are you doing eighty foot screening?
Well, no, you do a seventy foot tree line around an eighty foot tower, and.
Nobody's gonna plant a seventy foot tree.
Well, they shouldn't cut down the seventy foot trees that are already around it. Well, there should be.
We're going on this rabbit hole again, you know, we're thinking we got a hundred and ninety-nine foot towers. This is supposed to be simple, eighty foot towers, this is supposed to be somewhat user friendly, and here we go again.
Correct. Appreciate that, but.
Layers and layers and layers in this thing.
We understand your view, we understand your view, but I think others of us have a right to express ours, please let us.
I'm agreeing counter to your view.
Thank you.
Alright, so we've got camouflage, we've got removal. Um, I think camouflage, camouflage suitable for the tower's proposed location. Um, and Mr. Light brought up screening, if there's some way to work that in, we can for public consideration, and then we have a removal provision.
I would say specifically, my thought on the screening was to get to this issue of secondary roads or adjacent properties.
Okay.
So I'd be happy to limit it to that, but to the point that we're only, the setback only prohibits it, its distance to, uh, you know, the, the three major roads. I think some, some possibility of some language to do visual screening, like the ones we already have, I think would be a, would be valuable if we could work it in. I think those are the only other ones that I was.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't, I, I don't know how to approach that.
So, so you're dealing with color to, to, to.
Blend it in.
Make it disappear, and then you're gonna do camouflage, and the second thing to make it disappear, and then you're gonna do screening.
No, any of the above, to, to.
You've got three, you're saying three things to, to make this thing disappear.
Color and camouflage, I was considering the same thing, color and camouflage.
You wrote down two different times, so two different items there.
So what we did kind of in the comprehensive plan is we said it can be accomplished by any of the following combination of techniques, permitting peeling or coating to blend with surroundings, concealing within structures such as silos, turkey steeple, et cetera, fitting within mature tree cover with it, you know.
But if they attach it to something else, that's a different category, you're right.
Is that right? It's not, this is only a freestanding.
Yeah, 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 huh.
Okay.
But I think those other provisions, I agree with Miss Ishi, those are, those are potentially valuable ways to deal with this visual.
The idea is that we, we want the applicant to make every effort to, to not have it be an eyesore, that's the goal. That's the practical goal, so. Alright, uh, Mr. Curry, do you wanna just?
Well, I, I wrote down for the color, the facility shall be camouflaged to suit the location, and I attacked on and be not reflected, and I assume that if you reflect.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
You don't want this reflecting.
Great, and then the other one was removal?
Yeah, well, I need words, so.
What's up?
I need words.
Okay, so, on removal, Mr. Sharp, that was your idea? Yeah.
Um, if a tower is abandoned, and it will be removed within.
How long?
Uh, if it's been abandoned for more than two years, one year.
Say six months or something.
No, no, I mean.
I don't.
Um, six months is too, just, just say a year, and then we're gonna put that out for public comment anyway.
This says, and what we have currently is within ninety days, uh, facility shall be disassembled and removed from the site within ninety days of the disassembly.
It could be between users or something.
Right, yeah, I mean, we can't, we can't.
A hundred and ninety-nine foot tower has a lot more impact than the eight foot.
Correct. So abandoned for one, uh, one year, two years.
Two, two years is fine.
Okay, put two years, and then I, I'm fine with the color, camouflage language, and.
So by abandoned, you mean not used.
Not used for any.
Public safety or broadband.
Right, okay. Alright, the nitty gritty of local government right here in action, it's pretty good. Alright, anything else?
Uh, one of concealment strategies can be to conceal within mature tree cover, if you didn't get that.
The what?
You can, one, a concealment strategy can be to fit within mature tree cover.
Well, that's one strategy.
Right.
Is that a new shirt locked in term whether she picks a scamflester or not?
Doesn't Piedmont Broadband put some of their antennas up in the trees?
They put them up in the receiver up in the tree. But the tree eventually sometimes grows a little more, and then it diffuses.
So you'd have to remove the tree when they.
So right now, it's two changes.
Okay, great.
I think that's fine.
Yep, go ahead and read the changes, and then we'll.
Facility shall be camouflaged to suit the location to be now reflected. Uh, if the tower is not used for public check or broadband for a period of two years, then it must be removed.
Okay. Alright, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion for Mr. Sharp, and the motion.
Is to approve this guarding with the.
And also to authorize the Planning Commission to, to participate in a joint public hearing with the Board of Supervisors on July seventh, and to advertise a public hearing with the amended language.
That's exactly what I was saying.
I was thinking the same thing.
That was amazing, you must have been reading my mind.
Go ahead.
When you said that it should be, it should be removed, I think you'd stick in at the expense.
Well, I was gonna, yeah, I mean, I know, I thought that too.
Yeah, I am.
The, 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 the owner, the, well, it would be the.
Applicant.
The installer, yeah, yeah, there you go, thank you.
The who?
I welcome your input in this case. Just to get this done, thank you, though, seriously, I was thinking the same thing, we're on the same page.
Okay, well, I've been including all of that.
Okay, great, so Mr. Sharp's motion is to adopt this draft ordinance change with the chain.
Authorize it for public hearing.
And authorize it to public hearing.
You're not adopting anything.
We're pouring it into a public hearing.
You're right, okay. We're authorizing a public hearing and, and to consider this draft with the changes that the Planning Commission has put forward tonight. And, and Mr. Henry offered a second, is there any further discussion?
Uh, I, I'm gonna vote in favor of moving it forward to a public hearing, but I have significant concerns with this, this concept and this language. Um, so I just.
Okay, and the good news is you'll have another opportunity to weigh in on July seventh.
Yeah, I was gonna make the same comment, and I'll, I'll support that motion to move forward, but I, I still have concerns about the use and the some screening.
And totally appreciated, um, and I appreciate you all understanding how important this is as we incrementally move forward and trying to get broadband spread widely across Rappahannock County. So any further discussion?
Aye.
All, all those in favor, say aye, or.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. And Ms. Donahue, you may now go home and sleep well. The chairman of the broadband committee held on until now, thank you. Broadband authority, sorry. Um, alright, we've got one more to go. Um, and it's an easy one. Um, Mr. Curry, go ahead, and if you would, just give us context, and then we'll see where we end up.
Uh, it's your last meeting, uh, Mr. Fraser, uh, and Mr. Connet, uh, for the Planning Commission to consider adopting ordinance amendment changes regarding utility scale solar, uh, to, to make sure you have some more stringent requirements other than just requiring a special exception for electrical generating plants and facilities, without any special requirements, which is what your opinion ordinance right now. Mr. Goth and I talked about this, and it's a bit of a double edged sword. Um, if you put in special requirements, and somebody comes in and says, absolutely, I mean all those, pretty much gotta give a permit. Um, but if you don't have any special requirements, as we've seen here recently in, for example, contractors' yards, and it's just guided by the general standards, then there's subjectivity potentially involved in questions of whether you're being objective, and have a proper rationale for approving or not. So with all that said, um, I took what was provided by, uh, Mr. Connet, reviewed several other documents, did try to reach out to a few folks, and was unable to, to land anybody to, to guide this. There's still a need, uh, to do that long term, and a lot more work that can go into this. Uh, but given the timing and the conversations earlier, uh, these could be coming sooner than we, we know, and if you have something on the books, that probably is better than nothing. Um, as I noted, your current ordinance includes a use in the use table one seventy thirty-six for electrical generating plant facilities, there was no definition for electrical generating plant facilities. And so my approach was to base off of that, um, so this changed to one seventy dash eight, as a definition for electrical generating plant facilities, which isn't a special exception, and incorporated within that definition that the minimum yard requirement, um, would be a thousand feet from any road for that type of use. That is a typical electric plant smokestack, burping out of smoke. Uh, you wanna have that, we don't want those very many places, so a thousand foot setback. And I, the reason I did that is so that it could be a step down and much more generous, five hundred foot setback for solar. Uh, thinking that somewhere down the line, the foundation, there may be questions about whether the five hundred feet was too onerous for solar. And, uh, thinking, well, at least you can lay a little bit of foundation in your ordinance by saying, well, the daddy plant is a thousand, this, this is only half that. So those numbers are something that the Planning Commission needs to think about, whether they're, they're appropriate numbers. Um, the definition is, is based off a state code, and, uh, and basically, what it says in the definition for the electrical generating plant facilities, and then it, it does not include electrical generating plant facilities, comma, renewable energy small, or electrical generating plant facilities, renewable energy utility. Small is that category that is, must be allowed by right. State code says, if somebody puts in accessory solar or wind for their property, you have to allow it if they're gonna use it on their property, and that this definition picks up what, of the definition was, uh, put forward for, primarily used for the property.
And that's in the, in the use table, that's just by.
That's P.
Let's P all the way across, okay.
So primarily used, and so the one for utility is not primarily used for. So if you're using not, it's not primarily for that parcel, it's for some other parcel, and it does say parcel or, um, adjacent parcel under common ownership, then you've gotta then jump through special exception requirements, and then, and those special exception requirements are now laid out. and, and those special exception requirements are now laid out, um, in one seventy sixty-four. So in one seventy thirty-six, you can just see with the extra two rows. Uh, Mr. Goth and I have discussed, planning commission and board really need to think about, should this be a special exception? Should it be a special use permit? Who should be making these decisions? And should electrical generating plant facilities be permitted by a special exception in any zoning district? Do you want a power plant in your residential zoning district? I would suggest you probably don't. And maybe the table should not have an S E in these districts that start with R. Uh, maybe it shouldn't be in there for the commercial ones, maybe just industrial. So you need to think about that, uh, but again, with that parallel with, with solar, you need to think about that balance. Sit for, for the by right version, you have to allow that.
Okay.
Now, for the renewable, for the utility, um, you don't have to allow it everywhere. So you can think about, should it be allowed in all these? The conditions that you apply in one seventy sixty-four practically going to screen out many types of parcels. If you require five hundred acres, it's not gonna be in, uh, most of these districts, even though there's an S E in this, in this spot. Uh, and again, S E or S U P, that's a decision you should be making. So as I noted, one seventy sixty-four, uh, I's were the special requirements, uh, for that category of public, let's say, public uses. Uh, and I noted before, this is an amalgamation of a number of different, uh, sources. I don't remember the best way to do this other than read through it.
That's, that's fine, that's fine.
Uh, so for the utility scale, uh, use, uh, first subset one, the use shall be allowed only when plants and facilities, including means of interconnection to the utility grid, do not detract from the agricultural or rural characters of the county where its tourist account and the damage scenic vistas of the county is supported in comprehensive plan with particular attention to the goals, purposes, policies, appropriate in check for six, as well as future land use plan, common renewable energy operations section incorporated in check for seven, as largely from what was put forward earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and is, you know, overarching aspirational, this is what we want to have that.
Yep.
In approving an application for the students, the board shall take into account maximum height, size and location requested for renewable energy generating facilities in relation to existing exist, electric transmission lines and shell, including measures designed to screen or otherwise mitigate the visibility of proposed facilities from sensitive features identified in comprehensive plan, including beat out rightways, including scenic byways, Shenandoah National Park, and our historic resources, including the navigation sites designated for beginning land park register and national registry of certain places. The board shall also take into account protection of wetland, floodplains, steep slopes and prime agricultural soils designated for comprehensive plan. The views and business from these locations and joint properties must be protected and not imperative to mission, diminished by placement of renewable energy facilities. In determining whether or not to approve or deny application, the board shall analyze the potential effects and advantage points in the area, including those at higher elevations, to determine whether or not the proposed site of such facilities provides the best opportunity to minimize its visual impact on distraction to people and the environment. Uh, I exerted distraction to in a number of places because we know from a special exception standpoint, aesthetics cannot be the sole motivating factor for whether you approve or not approve. If you, it has a safety pin in there with distraction, I think it helps you just a little bit.
Okay.
So basically, between lines one oh one down to one twenty-two, uh, applying that, uh, anybody could say every property in Rappahannock County is excluded.
Well, I guess one could, if, there is a degree of subjectivity to any of this, um, but there could be parcels, I don't know. So I'm worried.
So, Mr. Curry, I'm, I'm not gonna interrupt your reading this.
No, that's, I think that's funny.
Um, so already, I guarantee you, twenty percent of the county is excluded that's unheeded. There's gonna be no, uh, solar farms on any scenic easement property. So there's twenty percent that absolutely struck out, and that's ag and conservation land. Then you got another twenty percent in the park.
That's forty percent.
So this forty percent of the county is excluded before you apply any standards to it. So, we're talking about this ordinance tonight and, and applications. And I think most of us don't understand what people are looking for to do solar fields. I'm in Shenandoah County, have some land over there, a couple farms, and I have a property over there that's sixty-eight acres. It's on the, uh, Mill Creek, the trout stream, and when I bought it, I put it in easements. Every property around me is going to solar fields. It's a hundred and fifty acres roughly on Turkey Knob Road, first one when they had, oh, started operating in the last six months. Across the road from me is thirty-seven acres that, uh, Rappahannock's O'Dett crew is doing. Right next to me, uh, that guy is, was, is going with Mitsubishi, uh, that's gonna, that's a hundred and thirty acre parcel. About fifty, sixty acres of it is gonna be solar field. Across the road, got another hundred acres. Uh, so it's a conglomerate of, of solar fields going in around me. And what's attracted everybody to that area is that there, there is, uh, um, three-phase electrical line to put the juice in, just transport it. If you don't have the three-phase line, they're not looking at your property. I had two hundred acres for sale that was absolutely wonderful as a for client, five miles from here. It was lo, level land, open land, surrounded by trees, buffer. I said, wow, this is great. Contacted some of the people that have been contacting me, they had no interest in it because it was no mode of transportation of electricity. I'm, I find it interesting coming to Page County and they say, and you see signs over there, no solar fields in farmland. Problem with Shenandoah County is that one of the best farms in the county is across the road from me. For, for, for decades, it produced York apples. Went into a, a process of plant employee, five hundred women, apples went around the world, uh, great food production. Trees got old, they pushed them out, became a five hundred acre cornfield. Produced two hundred and fifty bushels an acre, the corn went two miles to a corn mill, made chicken feed, chicken feed, went to chickens, ran a factory, perfect operate, operation, very low carbon imprint. And they took this wonderful piece of farmland, put glass on it. So, from my standpoint, I think we need to, to, to consider protecting prime agricultural land and maybe considering, you know, solar fields in areas that are not prime agricultural land. Now, I don't know how we distinguish the two.
The landfill.
You know. You know, so.
So this does try to do that, um, but it does a lot of, so ultimately, hundred thousand foot level, planning commission board supervisors have to give an idea of how open are you or we as a community to having this?
Right.
And, uh, do you, do you wanna make it really easy? Or should it be, there's a parcel out there or two, but they're very far, few of them. And, and that's a decision for a community that has, that you have to make. This does include a reference to the prime agricultural soils map in the comp plans and to put them there. But you start stacking all these things up and it may be very difficult to find a place to put it. And that may drive changes to some of those numbers, uh, to, to find a sweet spot for where it's perfect.
So the final, the final comment is that we use electricity and our electricity, uh, comes from someplace. Comes from, you know, a, a coal-fired plant in Ohio, someplace, comes through two states, cuts a power line across West Virginia, comes into Virginia. Or we got nuclear going on someplace, maybe we got some renewable, whether it's water, whatever, but we use electricity. And I don't know whether everybody in this room buys climate change or not, but the policies in the United States says it's climate change going on. You're seeing major oil companies, Exxon, Shell face board, uh, elections that are putting environmental people on their boards. It's a real thing. So, we can say that we, we're gonna continue to mess up somebody else's backyard where we can be part of the solution for the future. I mean, uh, I'm not particularly happy that I got all this glass around my farm, but I'm accepting it, you know? And I'm not gonna have any glass. And, you know, the income too is what we have to consider coming into these people. If you know, the, the income is fourteen hundred dollars an acre. That's what the rental rates are for solar fields for thirty years. Every year, if you put in a hundred acres, you know, you're gonna get a hundred forty thousand dollars every year for the next thirty years. So, for some of these large landowners that would like to keep their land together, you know, that, that's, that's real money. That's, that's profit. That's not like selling a million dollars worth of cattle and netting a hundred forty thousand.
Right.
So, it can be a plan that fits into, you know, keeping some of this land together.
Yeah, so.
For the next generation.
So this wording needs to.
So, I mean, this, this is all things that we need to consider, and I don't know, we, we can do all this in forty-five minutes.
Well, I don't know. All I know is, uh, you know, we're, I was, planning commission decided to move on this schedule at the last meeting. And so, uh, we put documents in front of you to allow that process to happen, the board has authorized that, that scheduling report. If you're not ready, I guess you, you know, you'll have to act on, on the map as a body. Uh, and if an application comes in on, uh, July eighth and you, all you have is a special, uh, the general conditions, then you will have to manage that application based on.
Right.
And where are you in a better position than you are now? I don't know.
So that's, that's just for the public's benefit. If an application comes in tomorrow and part of the urgency, and I credit Mr. Fraser and others for pushing this, uh, I received a, a funny phone call from someone who was acting very familiar in the voicemail message they left for me. As, I guess they're calling me because I'm a member of the board of supervisors. They said, hey, we haven't talked in a while and I wanna talk to you about a project in your voting district. And it was super vague and frankly, I thought it was, uh, some kind of scam call, so I ignored it. But then other people received the same call, and it turns out that it was actually a person with their eye on some parcel in the county for potential solar projects. So my question for the public's benefit is if an applicant like that came in tomorrow, clearly we have the ability to review carefully that application within the context of.
With the electrical generating plant.
Existing standards.
So let me tell you one more thing that's going on out there. It's all these, it's, it's like the eighteen forty-nine gold rush. It's all these little guys out here that are playing, uh, find the cheese. And they, they barely have two nickels to rub together, and maybe they got a little bit of support. And they're out here trying to tag a property, get it tied up to study it, do a feasibility study, get an approval process and, and drag it to somebody like Dominion or another big, big guy and get them to take it over. The, last year, Dominion had so many projects, I think they were charging in the beginning like, uh, maybe a thousand or fifteen hundred dollar application fee to bring something into them for them to look at. Their engineering department was so overwhelmed, I think they upped the fee to like twenty thousand dollars. So it thinned out all these little cat and mouse people, but some of them are still out there and, you know, still trying to, you know, do that big deal. So, uh, you might get a call, but, but if it's not a real player, they don't have the bucks behind them.
Fair enough.
You know, it, it's just, it's just like somebody's calling and trying to, you know, sell you something.
Yeah, could be.
Online.
Uh, I mean, but it's also, I mean, it wakes you up a little bit.
I know, it does. You don't know who the real or not, but.
Right.
You know, so many of these people are not real.
So I guess the question is, obviously on the short time, we're talking about a pretty limited amount of language that we had to consider. I guess my question to my colleagues would be, do you wish to work on this proposed language? Um, do you, would you agree, uh, to, to authorize a, a public hearing jointly with the board of supervisors and just take this draft, think about it between now and then, and then, and then raise any concerns, objections or proposed edits at that time on July seventh? Um, I'd like to, I'd like to keep moving here, so, and I appreciate the work that went into this. I had hoped that we could bring in some outside land use expertise with the subject matter expertise for, for this language. I know we were not able to do that in the time available, but maybe we still can.
I still haven't identified anybody who wants to do it.
Yeah, sort of a subject matter expert. Um, so I guess the question is, a motion?
Um, well, one, one thing we can consider, I, I, I personally think that Mr. Curry and Mr. Goth have done a very good job with this language and, uh, I appreciate that. It was a quick turnaround and I know, you know, it is hard to find an expert. Um, I'm still hoping we can do that because although I think this language is good, the question is, you know, can, how, can we, can we, can we do it? Uh, is this consistent with the code? I think you're, you, you've raised that question yourself. So I think, uh, you know, between now and the hearing, we should continue to look for an expert who will look at this. We can, we can set a work session if we wanted to, or we can just let you move forward with it.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, I.
It's too complicated, it's too serious.
To, to, a, a couple of points that have been raised earlier, I, I also support renewable energy. I think it's really important in a lot of contexts. Citing of renewable energy is a hugely important issue and citing it right is hugely important. And it's, it's important to connect it to the grid, it's important to, for public support. If you start putting it in the wrong places, you lose public support, you create all kinds of problems. So, I'm not positive, certainly what you've done and what the state requires, which, which is, um, onsite distributed generation of, you know, where you generate it onsite, that's terrific. When you start having utility scale, uh, facilities and, 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 and areas, there, there are wildlife impacts. There are lots of impact, but there are visual impacts and for a community that's the gateway to the Shenandoah National Park, I think we should strongly consider whether that visual impact is really what we want as for our tourist economy. So, I do think there are important questions here, but I, I don't, I don't think that the language you've written means that nobody could get approval. I just think it gives us the ability to look at it closely. Um, so what I would suggest is a, as a way forward is to, um, is to either, either set a work session or just move it on to the public hearing and allow Mr. Curry to continue to try to find an expert to give advice on whether or not we can support, whether this would be defensible language.
Well, why don't you go ahead and make a motion either way and then we'll see where we end up.
I have one question, this is just thinking outside the box. But would it be possible just to designate areas that would be suitable for this, not because it's industrial or commercial?
You could do an overlay.
And that is what Mr. Goth and I discussed, is that you could identify an overlay district where these are appropriate. But you, you start putting envelopes over envelopes, you, what, you can't have probably everything because then you're screening out practically any potential use.
I mean, it could relate to where the three-phase power runs.
Well, that, the market's gonna do that, I mean, quite frankly, as Mr. Henry already stated. And, uh, regional commission already did a little G I S work in the whole region to say, you know, these are the, the likely locations.
Well, see, that's, I mean, we're, we're talking about Russian this, you know, it's, it's the Medal of Jun and Russian this to a public hearing that something's gonna be voted on and getting approved the first week of July, and we're, we're getting educated now. I mean, it's, I mean, we need a, one work session, two work sessions.
Okay.
We need some work session, we can't, I, you know, I, I'm not gonna cover up my tomatoes tonight, but I think it might be at frost tomorrow, okay? So, you know, yeah.
Well, we just moved on to broadband language to a hearing because of urgency. I, you know, this seems to me more urgent than.
Broadband is simple. That's pretty simple. And that's been studied for years and years and years. There's been a committee on broadband for, what, two, three, four years? Five years. And finally, something happened after five years. So, you know, we talked about this a couple, one night tonight and look at this, and, and we don't know what, we don't understand what goes into broadband after five years. We don't understand what goes into solar fields after one meeting. I mean, we can reach out and get some people, I'm sure somebody, you know, you know, uh, from Dominion would be happy to come and educate us, you know? Uh, I'm, I'm sure we could get a, you know, an, an attorney that works with environmental, you know, solar fields, that can. V O F, I've called and talked to V O F, they're very educated on it. And we just hear that, you know, phase three lines, it's, it's a G I S map someplace that designate the areas. I'd like to see that, you know, what is in Rappahannock County that would possibly work. So, we got, I don't think we should rush through this. This is a very serious, uh, ordinance that we're talking about.
Okay.
Well, you know, as I, as I see this, we have, this, if, if there, whether there's solar fields here or not, I don't think Rappahannock necessarily benefits from the solar field. It's, uh, the individual who has it on their land does, but if it's going into the grid, it's not going to, it's not coming to serve anybody in Rappahannock. Uh, for all I know, it's going up to Connecticut. So, um, I think we're, you know, we do have, as Phil Irwin would say, we do have something unique here and we don't necessarily want to, to lose it. And, uh, if.
And, uh, if, uh, having a public hearing on this to hear what the people think, uh, you know, is maybe a, a good way to go. This might not be the perfect language, but we can always keep improving it. But it's, um, uh, it gives us at least something to hang our hat on that is, uh, to, to preserve this county.
Once you build it, it's hard to remodel it. Once you approve this ordinance, it's, it's gonna be very difficult to go back and do changes to it. Uh, we've seen when we try to do modifications, you know, that we've worked on for two or three years, these may amendments, you know, it took us two or three years to, to work on them.
Five.
Excuse me, five. Five's the magic number tonight. So, you know, so to say we're gonna pass something then, you know, modify, you know, next year, whenever, that's, that's, that's not doing it right the first time. I think we should do something that's right the first time and informed, and not just something patchwork.
This is very similar to what we have in the comprehensive plan, what we just passed in the comprehensive plan. Um, so I don't, I, it's not like we've not looked at this and not considered the topic. We, we agreed and passed it, you know, as, as, as desirable language in a comprehensive plan, so I, you know, I don't, I, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, we move this to a public hearing on the seventh, as we told the board we would, we would do for them. Um, and Mr. Curry can work on it in the meanwhile to try to make sure he's captured comments and, and continue to look for an expert that can help us with defensibility of, of this and identify any important topics.
Okay, so that's a motion authorizing a joint, uh, participation in a joint public hearing with the Board of Supervisors and, and going forward with this, this language.
Is that on the same date?
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're tied together, yeah. Does anyone want to second their motion?
So, so you got two complicated things that people are gonna have questions about on the same time. People's thought process and attention, eh, you know, are gonna be strained, and, you know, you're talking about four or five hours potentially for these two public hearings?
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
That's, that's, that's...
Well, that was a point I made last month, and you're, you're singing my tune, but I thought this was, the renewable energy is the more important one, and the broadband was not, did not feel urgent because nobody's asking for that particular provision externally, just us internally are chewing on it. So I, I would tend to agree with you, but I think this is, of the two of them, this is the more urgent.
Okay, anyone?
I would agree with that.
Anyone wish to second this decision?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd like to add some discussion. Um, I do think that, um, that this is very restrictive language. Um, I, I, I can't imagine more than a very small number of properties meeting that. So I think there's a question about what experts can tell us with respect to, um, you know, defensibility and all that, but the question of how many of these things we might want, or what areas we want to protect, is not a technical expert question, you know, that's something we have to come to terms with. And so, um, uh, you know, I think the point Mr. Fletcher brought up about a twenty-year permit, I, I agree with that. That is probably in itself a showstopper, right out of the, right out of the gate, from what I understand to be the...
Wasn't this really designed to be a showstopper?
Well, I don't think so, but that is, but that is...
I'm sure that gets into the minutes.
No, I, I don't disagree relative to that, and when I was sitting over there, um, I did real quick look up, and it said in two thousand seven, the average life was twenty-one years, and, and I, I don't remember the site, I looked at some report.
They're, they're much longer.
And then in two thousand nineteen, it was thirty-one years, so...
Yeah.
Technology is, is advancing, and these panels are lasting longer and longer, and they're able to capitalize longer.
Yeah. The other comment I wanted to make is just to clarify and reinforce something Mr. Kohler said earlier, that these utility scales, I mean, they're dependent on the grid, and they're feeding the grid, so when the grid goes down, the power goes down, and when they're up, the electricity's going somewhere else. So I, I think it would be a mistake to start looking at these as kind of local supplies, unless we build our own grid and do something that would be very different than anything that is in place anywhere now or really anticipated. So I, I feel like that was something that, that might need to be, uh, out there and better understood. Um, you know, I, I think the, the, with, with the five hundred acre, I mean, that's another one that is, uh, you know, really incredible. I, I, my understanding of these generally is that they need to be pretty large to be economical. I'm curious, Mr. Henry, uh, I, I'm guessing that maybe some of those smaller parcels are working together, and they're part of a larger one, or are they all independent?
Independent.
Interesting. Um, so, and, and I know the three-phase issue came up, but basically, the other thing about this, and, you know, I'm not an expert in this, but I actually, our company has a lot of experts in this, and I, so I paid some attention to it. Um, the interconnectivity, whether it's three-phase or whatever the substations are to allow interconnectivity to the grid, is the holy grail. I don't know that it's limited to three-phase. Three-phase may be, three-phase lines may be one of the, the holy grails, but connectivity to a, a proper feeder line is certainly a significant one. So I do feel like we need a work session on this. I, I think we have the general standards that could, we could deal with a, a current, um, application, uh, but I'd say in this case, I, I agree with Mr. Henry, that getting ourselves, you know, spending, just spending more time working through this, whether it's with an expert or without, without, and I think an expert would at least help us understand and educate ourselves enough that we can grasp some of these implications about, you know, environmental consequences. One other comment on this, I under, you know, one of the more touchy things about this to me is this question about agricultural soils. Agricultural soils, I believe, tend to be in fairly flat places that maybe aren't that visible to other places, and, you know, I think there's a tension there, uh, because if you start saying it, we're protecting agricultural soils, you're pretty close to saying, if you have a farm, you've, you've got to farm it, rather than use it for something else. And that troubles me a little bit, because it really doesn't have any bearing necessarily on how it impacts anybody other than the owner of that property. And so in a way, this idea of trying to protect agricultural lands may be really just impacting the farmers who have those lands, and may have no impact at all on the surrounding property owners. So I do think there's a lot more we need to educate ourselves on here, and I support Mr. Henry's approach.
I would be willing to amend my, um, motion to say, uh, that, to suggest that we have a work session in two weeks, the week before the, um, the January, uh, July seventh meeting, um, to allow Mr. Curry some time to absorb some of these other issues. I'd be happy to add that, too. I'll just say, though, also on this, we should bear in mind that this is not just solar energy, it's wind also. And, uh, you know, we do have, we do have some ridge tops that might be, um, of interest to wind providers. I don't know whether those are close enough to power lines to be, to be attractive or not, but anyways, we've got two issues going here.
Okay, so you're amending your motion to, uh, schedule a work session to delve into this further with hopefully some outside expertise to weigh in if we can manage it. And today is June sixteenth, um, do you want to set a date, date and time certain?
I, I would say in two weeks.
So that would be...
We've got three weeks till the July seventh hearing.
But you still want to...
Yeah, but we won't have, at that point, we won't, I'm pretty sure Mr. Curry can confirm we can't...
It needs to be in paper next week, so either you're gonna move forward with this public hearing and try to educate yourself between now and then. I will say that the public hearing notice is general, um, enough to allow changes in the ordinance, uh, following, you know, at that public hearing time, as long as you stay in line with that notice, uh, which can't get, it's gotta be aligned with that public hearing notice. So ultimately, the Planning Commission needs to decide whether this is going to public hearing on July seventh or not.
So we can't vote at a work session, so I would think we'd have to continue this meeting to redo this.
Um, I don't know, but...
Well, we, we do...
You have to make the decision today if it's gonna have a public hearing.
Or advertise.
You can make the decision that it's gonna have a public hearing, and you're gonna meet and talk about...
Correct.
What language, how you'd like the language to look at the end of the day. If there's going to be a public hearing on July seventh, you pretty much have to decide now.
So the board, the board, can you refresh my memory on what the board decided that's, uh, about this at the last...
The board authorized the joint public hearing.
For both.
You know, assuming, if the Planning Commission, you know, reviewed it and approved and authorized it to move forward.
You know, I, I think having a work session in two weeks is fine. I think that's a good start.
Okay.
You know, we, we always talk about Alamooral County, uh, Pemfags, and when we talk ordinances and things like this. I think we should look around, uh, look at what other counties have done. I think we should like, try, I would love for us to do a site visit to, to the one in Shenandoah County on Turkey Not Road.
Good idea.
And, and do a site visit, see what it looks like, see what we're, we're actually talking about, look at it and, and inspect it.
Good idea.
Um, you know, and, and do something right. Maybe we will be a model on how to address, you know, protection of youth shed, protection of, of agricultural soils, and, and, and come up with something that, that we'll be proud of instead of rushing real quick to, to, to put something down.
Well, I think we're putting, I, 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 with all, with a lot of respect, because I understand what you're saying, and I, I respect the fact that you, you've actually seen these, they're, they surround your property, so you have some knowledge on that, Mr. Henry, and I, I think that's, that's, that's...
Nice.
Helpful. Um, but I, uh, I sat in on the final Planning Commissioner's course and listened to a, a number of county, counties who were present at that, say that they had, they had had applications come in also and approved a number of them, but now they were trying to put a, a halt to it because they didn't understand what they were dealing with. But they came and these applications came in, and they had to do something with them, so they just sort of approved them. So I think, I wanna keep the July seventh hearing, joint hearing on this, um, because I think we should move forward with this and, 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 you know, try to get something in place. If, if it's possible, I didn't, I don't, I don't quite understand what you're saying about whether we can keep the July hearing but still have a work session and change the language.
The bottom line is, if, if, if we're going to authorize a joint public hearing with the Board of Supervisors, that has to be decided tonight so that we have sufficient time to advertise it.
But, but not the actual language, is that, I think that's missing.
It's general language about, um...
The, the advertisement states that the language is available for inspection. Now, ultimately, at that, after that public hearing, the language that's adopted by the Board of Supervisors can be different than what is laid out for people to look at, as long as it's in keeping with the, with the public hearing.
Right.
And that goes back to the bully ad initio discussion of that's five and ten acres and all that.
So the representation to the public is, is what is gonna be on board docs, what we have right now?
So, so...
Correct.
Right, and so the public's gonna see, this is a very restrictive ordinance. If I don't like very restrictive ordinances, I better go speak about that, or if I do like very restrictive ordinances, I better go speak about that. And the flip side of that is you could have an ordinance up there that says, you can put these anywhere, and you might hear from a different group of people.
Sure.
It's a lot of variables here, and then it's, it's, it's not good government to me.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Shulman?
Will she have amended her motion?
Well, yeah, so I'm confused as to whether that amendment works or not.
Well, it, it works if that's your amendment, but...
It wouldn't work if it got voted for. I mean, if it got voted.
I, I wanna...
The public would, would be able to see the version that is placed in my office, and we placed on board docs would be this version or whatever words you wanna change in it. However, the version that's adopted could differ from this after the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I just don't think...
I anticipate that being the case.
I, I don't think you're addressing the, I, what I understand the question to be, and that is, is if we announce the hearing, is it the language that's on board docs as of tonight when we vote on it, or is it as of what we come out of a work session with? What is the, what is the relationship between our timing for touching the language and the notice?
The ad says that a complete text of the post amendment is in the form, in the form of ordinance available for, for inspection at the county administrator's office. So this language, or whatever you, words you change to it tonight, will be in my office for, available for inspection.
So it's whatever language is in board docs when that thing hits the news, is what we're stuck with?
June twenty-fourth.
Well, it's, it's in my office.
But I'm stuck with...
It's tonight, it's, it's this, with any changes we make tonight.
Right, right.
But it's not what you're stuck with adopting.
I understand, but the point is, if we have a work session, that work session isn't going to change the language that goes to the public, because that will already have been established.
It would inform, it would input at a later date.
It could help us to change it at the meeting, so...
Now, if you wholesale change this completely out, I think Art and I would say, better hold another public hearing.
Yeah, well, that'd be fine. I'm not opposed to that. I mean, I do, I do, look, I've been in the business of doing public comment, and we always get the opposition more than you get the supporters, no matter what you're dealing with. So, you know, in a way, you know, I think we're...
So, so here's what we're doing on...
Take, one second, Brian.
I think that the, uh, there's gonna be a lot of changes to this, regardless of, we're gonna loosen it, we're leaving it as tight as it is, there's gonna be a lot of people showing up. I think having a work session would have us better prepared to deal with those changes if we come to the joint meeting.
Okay, so would, are you, how do you feel about a joint public hearing on July seventh with the, the local government?
I think it's premature, but I also feel that we're a little naked right now, so I wanna get this ball rolling. How can we put forth a recommendation and support something that we don't understand ourselves? We don't understand the industry, we don't understand what's going on, and the public looks to us as an informed, educated body for knowledge. How can we represent to them that we're up to where we're supposed to be on an education level about this subject, and we're not? How can we do that? I mean, it's like practicing medicine with, uh, you know, with, with a first aid license, you know, it's, it, we're not up to the knowledge and information where we should be to do an informed dis, representation to the public.
So the way we...
I would agree with Mr. Henry that we're not up to speed on, at least in my opinion, on the technology, and so I think it might be nice to know, but I don't think that this language is that complicated, uh, that it's, uh, it's just saying, you know, you've gotta have this, if you're gonna do it, it has to be done this way, and it has to be done here, I don't know what that type of work is.
So what's your motion?
So if...
What is amended motion? And then let's, we'll wrap it up here.
So the motion is to hold this for a public hearing on the seventh, as we agreed last month, and to have a work session in between to make any... If that's the, the mandate.
That's your motion, okay. And...
Can we make it earlier?
We can make it earlier.
The work session? It's good tomorrow.
Yeah, earlier than today.
Okay, so June thirtieth, and we'll fix the time, and then, um, but you're also, you also are authorized in the joint public hearing...
Yes.
From the Planning Commission perspective, and who seconded your original motion?
I did.
And are you okay with it?
Well, I'll second the amended motion.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I guess just to, again, I, Mr. Henry raises a good point, how we describe this is that we're putting this out there as language that we propose, I think. I mean, is that what we're saying? We're not saying, here's some straw man language that we'd like you to react to, or do we have a choice in how we characterize it?
It's, it's proposed only, Gary.
Exactly.
It's proposed language.
It is proposed language. So that, that, that I think is where I believe Mr. Henry's coming from, and I tend to agree. If we don't really feel that we're ready to get behind this language, I do think that's a, that's a, that's a challenge to just go ahead with it.
You're saying we've done the best that we could do.
Okay, so...
Well, whoa, 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 we, we, we don't have to say we're recommending this language. We can just say we're moving it to a public hearing.
You would, you only recommend it after you take a vote on the seventh, just before the board considers and possibly takes a vote. You could, you could vote no.
Yeah, yeah.
And the board may vote no or yes.
Okay, well, I.
I think it helps to do this.
Okay, so. So, any other, okay. All right, so the motion is to have a work session in two weeks and then also to authorize a, a public hearing, joint public hearing with the Board of Supervisors on July seventh. And, Mr. Shulon?
Aye.
And Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Ms. Ishii?
Aye.
Mr. Trevor?
Aye.
I'll vote nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. All right. That's, so in terms of the time on, the time on the?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth, thank you. Thanks everyone for hanging in here. Wow, that's a long one.
Did you take your time yet?
What time is our meeting? Here, what time is this meeting?
What's that?
We could have had something on good. Alex wanted early.
Here, do you have a time for this meeting? Do we have a time?
We'll have to ask Mr. Curry, do you have any sense of the thirtieth and?
It's the fifth.
Apparently there is not court. If you don't continue, there's special meeting and then there's special rules and you're.
Would it be, would it be easier for everyone if we just continued the meeting?
Yeah.
And would that be in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So a date, time, place specific.
Okay, so I need a motion to continue this meeting to June thirtieth at, there's no court. So if someone wants to make a motion, pick a convenient time. Can we, five, five P M. or six P M. or? What do you prefer?
Doesn't matter to me. Five P M.'s fine.
Five P M. on the thirtieth in the courthouse.
Can everybody make that?
Six o'clock would be a lot better.
Six o'clock. It's now six o'clock.
Six.
Do I hear six? Do I hear?
I hear six. I'll give you a six.
I propose six.
Okay, so, yes, okay, Mr. Kohler made the motion that we will continue this meeting to six P M. on the thirtieth of June in the courthouse and a second.
I'll second.
And that's Mr. Light. Discussion? No discussion. Thank you, all those in favor. Thank you. Well, we're not adjourned. We continue the meeting.
Oh, very good.